Well, good evening everyone. We'll call to order this regular meeting of the Willow City Council for Tuesday, May twenty eighth, twenty twenty fourth. Item two on our agenda this evening, pledge of allegiance allegiance, Vice Mayor Evan Hudson, would you do the honors and lead us in the pledge, please?
Yeah, please stand.
Luke.
But. By the United States of America. And through the Republic of Louisiana, Spain. All nations. I count. And the people. The people.
Thank you, Evan. Item three, roll call, City Clerk James Hoover, please.
Councilmember Thomas.
Present.
Councilmember Sprague.
Here.
Councilmember Vodden.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hudson.
Present.
Mayor Hanson.
Here.
Mayor is present, sir.
Thank you. Item four, changes to the agenda, City Manager Marty Brown.
Yes, if it pleases the mayor and council, I'd like to request that item six A be moved until the city attorney is able to join us in person. She's currently on. She's on Zoom, but she is en route to this meeting, and so I'd like to ask that the council move that item until she's able to be physically here at council chambers.
Very good. That request, item six A will be moved toward the bottom of the action calendar this evening. A and B, Mr. Mayor. Just item, just item A. Thank you. Any other changes, Marty?
No, there are not.
Thank you very much. Item five, public comment and consent calendar forum. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and approved by one motion and vote unless council members or the city manager first request that a matter be removed for separate discussion and action. Individuals wishing to address the city council concerning consent calendar items or regarding matters that are not already on the agenda are invited to make little comments of three minutes at this time. And please address your comments to the mayor and council members and not to staff and toward the audience. And as a reminder by state law, the city council is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. First, are there any public comments on the consent calendar today? Consent calendar, public comments? No? Are there any public comments on any matters not on the agenda this evening? There, there is. There, there is an individual that we know in the bullpen. Good evening. Good to see you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Shannon McGovern. I work for Cal Water. And I am here to make sure that the public and and you all are aware of an upcoming event that Cal Water is hosting here at council chambers next Wednesday, the fifth. We are facilitating an emergency operations center training along with a tabletop exercise to simulate a disaster. This is something that Cal Water trains for repeatedly internally, but once a year, we also invite the community to train with us so that we can share best practices and all collaborate and communicate prior to a disaster. I think we all know that if there's an emergency, it's not the right time to be looking for someone's business card. So this really gives us a good opportunity to train together. We have two facilitators that are both retired fire chiefs. So they, we take safety and emergency preparedness very, very seriously. And and this training has received overwhelmingly positive feedback from first responders and community members alike. So you do not need to be a first responder in order to participate in this training. I think anybody in the community has the ability to respond in a, in a meaningful, productive way during an emergency to keep it from becoming a disaster. So I encourage anybody who has any interest to join us again next week on Wednesday. We start around nine AM. And we'll have the emergency preparedness portion of the training. We'll break for lunch and then we'll reconvene and we'll do a tabletop exercise where we kind of simulate an emergency and and get put through our paces a little bit. So anybody that's interested can call our local Cal Water office and that phone number is area code five, three, zero, nine, three, four, four, seven, three, five, and they will email you a copy of the flyer where you can then use the link to sign up an RSVP. And I hope to see some of you, whoever is available to attend, we'll have to see you there.
Thank you very much, Shannon.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Cal Water, you, you, you're, you and your firm, you're in your, your company, your organization, put on outstanding E O C training. And for anybody that has not attended E O C ops training, it's, it's a great experience. So. And it's preparing for when it happens, not it, but when it happens, so you're, so you're ready to roll.
It's, it's better if we train together.
Absolutely. So thank you, Shannon. Thank you.
Oh, I should also add, it's at no cost.
It is free.
Yeah, it is free.
Yes.
Yeah. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Have a good session. Thank you. Are there any other public comments this evening on any matters not on the agenda? Not on the agenda? Okay. Any, any public comments? Matters not on the agenda? Okay, thank you. Council members, the consent calendar tonight, item five A register approval. Consider approval of the general checking payroll and direct deposit check registers. Item five B minutes approval, consider approval of the May fourteenth, twenty twenty four meeting minutes. Item five C delegated maintenance agreement with the California Department of Transportation. Consider authorizing the city manager to execute a delegated maintenance agreement with the state of California Department of Transportation. And that is the consent calendar for this evening.
Mr. Mayor. I have what? I don't need to poll item five C, but I do have a question about the delegated maintenance agreement.
As do I.
On page fifteen of the contract or of the agenda, item graffiti removal says local agencies. Graffiti removal shall be limited to removal of text only in accordance with the street and highway code. Any graffiti that in any way resembles a mural, artwork, paintings, or similar elements may not be removed without first obtaining approval. Does that include obscene pictures? Maybe painted?
I think we would be able to consider that not being artistic or a mural. I think the, the reasoning behind that language is to protect any actual murals that have been painted that we as the city wouldn't that. You know, can get confirmation from Cal Trans that we're able to remove that. So. We can, I mean, the discussion could be had, but if it's offensive or obscene, we would move forward with removing that from the the straight right away like we would with the City of Willow's jurisdiction as well.
This looks like it's pretty perfunctory and just updating last year, last contract was three thousand dollars, this one's twenty thousand.
Yeah, that's, that's the biggest, the biggest thing here is getting instead of a kind of agreed upon amount of thirty five hundred dollars for the year, it's now a time and materials basis with a, a twenty thousand dollar not to exceed limit that we can amend if we need to, if we end up going on that. So we'll be billing loaded, fully weighted hours of our employees for the effort that they put in on a, on a real time basis.
No, no further.
I have some questions, Mr. Mayor, if I may, please. The twenty thousand dollars is income to the city, is that correct?
It would be.
It's an offset, but it still goes in.
Labor and equipment reimbursement to the city.
Very good. So this was eighty eight, it was thirty five hundred dollars and it's two thousand and twenty four. What the heck?
They were all agreements.
Have we historically gone over the thirty five hundred dollars? Can we show a pattern of we've spent a lot more than what we were collecting from Cal Trans?
I would have to look at the tracking of the time and and put that together. I don't know the exact amounts that we've, that we've put in time wise. They may have been tracked and we can look into that.
Very good. I would be curious as to the time passage between thirty five hundred and twenty grand. I think that's an educational component for my, for all of our benefit and and clearly it is income. If it's income, where will it show up on the income?
It would be an offset.
Against.
It would come in as a revenue and it would basically the expense we incur for our employees, we would show a revenue in for that. So the expense.
So. On a specific line item for public works.
Be the general fund unless sometimes we use gas tax monies, for example, to pay for salaries and benefits of some of our public works employees. But generally, I would say it would be an offset for the general.
Joe, so you know, my, my curiosity or concern is that we have a twenty thousand dollar, in my opinion, revenue stream, which is offsetting costs, which are already in other aspects of our budget. Therefore, it becomes, you know, how do we clarify and understand transparently where it all comes out in the wash? And do we, in fact, spend more than twenty grand at any given point in time? I think there should be a red flag if in fact we do go over any of those numbers.
Yeah.
Then it does come out.
Yeah, we'll be tracking that time zone, our time card system, they'll be able to select projects basically and track their time against that twenty thousand. So it's not a locked in rate. They have already stated they're willing to amend that if we do. And if we start getting close, say at seventeen thousand dollars, eighteen thousand dollars, we would amend that not to exceed limit higher. They're going to pay us for actual work done regardless. So.
Okay, well, most not to exceeds are pretty firm, so I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah.
I'd go ask for twenty more.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Joe.
Is that one, that twenty thousand, is that per fiscal year? Or is that total annual?
It'd be total annual or fiscal year. Yep.
Anything further?
Nope.
Yeah, just a quick comment. I don't want to pull the item, but on five A with the check registered, the city manager is kind enough to include a email to us that identifies the big ticket items that I find very helpful. So thank you, Madam, or City Manager. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Sprague. In reference to item five C, the maintenance agreement with Cal Trans. It's amazing how time flies, but it's, it's a good idea to upgrade the contracts every thirty six years at least. So.
Yeah. At a minimum.
But you know, this is just, you know, something that clearly fell through the cracks and our public works team has diligently been maintaining keeping, just about one sixty two within the city limits clean for all these years, but boy, it's, yeah. It's, it's, yeah, that's, that's, that's amazing.
If I might just add, Mayor, we recognize that we need to do a really fine tooth, you know, comb kind of approach to evaluating and looking at all of our contracts. And as time permits, staff is doing that. So you may see more of these kinds of things that are sort of clean up and trying to improve certainly the revenue for the city, but also just bringing us into the twenty first century. We, we, we also think that's a good idea.
No, absolutely.
Any contract that's as old as I am?
It's, it is a, it's very well worth it. The new contract that's presented, it's, it's very well written. It's a good job. Pretty good. Thank you. Any further comments from the council or consent calendar?
Moved to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Councilmember Vodden is.
With item one dropped out. Yes, yeah.
Councilmember Vodden has moved to approve the consent calendar as presented. That'll be items five A, B and C and Vice Mayor Hudson has a second.
Yes, sir.
Vice Mayor Hudson has a second for the discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thirteen, absolutely, five zero. Thank you. Moving on to item six, discussion and action calendar. All matters in this section of the agenda are discussed and will be acted on individually. Individuals wishing to address the city council concerning any of these items are invited to make little comments of the three minutes at this time. Please address your comments to the mayor and council members and not to staff and or the audience. And when the mayor falls for public comment, please raise your hand to be acknowledged. And while not required, the city requests that you please state your name clearly for the audio, audio recording. And as a reminder by state law, the council is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. I will call for a public comment as we, as we move through the, the agenda items as well, ladies and gentlemen. So.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I see a couple of ladies that did enter the meeting here, and I think they're probably here for item six A. They would not understand our, our procedure in moving that to the bottom of the agenda. So as opposed to suggesting that they sit here through the remaining portion of the meeting, may I suggest if they just want to speak in regard to item six A, that they could do that at this point?
Well, Mr. Sprague, we're, we're moving item six A to near the bottom or may possibly the bottom of the action calendar this evening because our city attorney is en route. Had a very important matter that she had to attend to this evening that came up. And she is en route and will be here soon when our, when our, when council arrives, we will address item six A at that time.
That's fine. Again, you're opening it up for public comments. So I'm just asking at this point in time, if they wanted to speak on item six A, would be appropriate for them to be able to do it ahead of that item and not have to sit through the rest of somewhat of a boring meeting for them?
Well, thank you, Mr. Sprague. We will take up item six A when our council arrives.
Okay, may I explain to them then what we're doing?
Are there any questions of what we're doing this evening? Anybody? We're moving item six A below. We'll, we'll take up item six A when our city attorney arrives here in the council chambers this evening. We'll take up item six A. Is that clear? Yeah, thank you.
It'll be over.
Thank you. Moving on to item six B, award of contract for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four annual sidewalk maintenance project. Consider approval of a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement with F B D Vanguard Construction Incorporated for forty seven thousand seventy five dollars to construct sidewalk improvements in connection with the fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four annual sidewalk maintenance project and establish an overall budget for the project of sixty four thousand seven hundred and seventy seven dollars. Senior Manager Marty Brown, would you like, do you have any comments to make or you prefer this goes to our deputy city engineer or our community development?
Yeah, just would, I, you notice that probably the contact on here is John Wanger, city engineer. He's not here this evening. Ian Brunswick, the deputy city engineer with Coastland and for the city of Willis, will be presenting this agenda item tonight.
Very good, Mr. Brown. Good to see you. Yeah.
Thank you. It's good to be here, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to present this project for the council. Essentially, what it entails is annual sidewalk maintenance project, which encompasses approximately. Can you hear, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Apologize. It encompasses approximately eleven hundred square feet of sidewalk improvements at four separate locations throughout the city, all in geographically different locations, not all together. And what this basically entails is just replacing areas of sidewalk that we've identified are in glaring need of rehabilitation or placement with, with the understanding of the budget that we have identified for this annual project.
You want to address the issue that was raised in the email today? I don't know.
Absolutely. So, so there was a, a question raised about the budgeted costs for construction management and inspection attributed to the project. So typically, you know, well, generally what we like to see is construction management inspection costs around fifteen percent of the total construction cost of the project. With this particular project that we've presented, the construction management inspection costs are closer to twenty five percent of the total construction cost, which is a little bit high. And there, there's a couple of reasons, I think, behind this. The three in particular that come to mind are basically the size of the project. We're very limited it with the budget. So there's a disproportionate amount of C M and inspection services that are needed to handle a project with a small budget. And then the type of improvements that are being performed as part of this project being concrete flatwork. So we have concrete improvements. And then on top of that, it's the working day duration that we've identified or estimated to complete the project. So the fifteen working day duration essentially has two hours per day of inspection coverage for the project. And then we've also identified ten hours of construction management services throughout that fifteen working day duration of the project. We, we feel this is the minimum effort required to inspect and manage this, the smaller budget project to ensure that we get the final product constructed to city standard, and it's something that's going to stay the best of time. Having said that, we're always looking for opportunities to work with the contractor and find ways to partner with them. And in the event that, you know, this project was completed, you know, in eleven or twelve days before in advance of the fifteen working day designation. Now, the city would not bear any costs associated with that additional inspection services that would have been performed for those other days remaining through that fifteen day contract completion time.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Brunswick. Council members, questions, comments from Mr. Brunswick in reference to this item?
If may, Mr. Mayor, those were my concerns when I read the staff report. The inspection hours and the construction management total forty hours and the twelve thousand nine ninety five cost is three hundred and twenty four dollars and eighty seven cents an hour, which seems egregiously high for inspecting a contractor's work. Sidewalk's four feet wide, right?
Not in all locations. We do have some five foot wide sidewalk on the project.
Okay, because I came up with about two hundred and seventy five linear feet of sidewalk. It just, when I look at these and from my perspective and fiscal watching the dollars, it just seems that the construction management inspection on most of these contracts seems higher than, than I would think normal. And this one is twenty five percent. So thank you, Marty, for sending additional information on, on my request from this afternoon. Is this a fixed cost or is this cost adjusted based on actual time?
It would be cost based on actual time.
So theoretically, it's going to be less?
Theoretically, if we can get the project completed before the fifteen working day, there would be less costs.
And that's based on hourly that you've provided here, Marty.
That's correct.
I, it's also, I think, worth noting that there was a discrepancy between the staff report and the documents that I gave you today. I don't know if you want to speak to that at all, Ian.
Well, in the staff report, thank you, Marty. In the staff report, we identified twelve thousand nine hundred and ninety five dollars allocated towards inspection and construction. Excuse me, construction management. There, there was a small error with that. It's, it's not really going to move the needle to the ton, but the revised estimate was twelve thousand six forty six instead of twelve thousand nine ninety five. So that was an error on my part that we will definitely get corrected. However, there is a little bit of a reduction there in, in the staff call from what's shown in the original staff report.
So that, that was the construction management inspection fee or charge or estimate rather would be twelve thousand six hundred and forty six dollars rather than twelve thousand nine ninety five?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
No, I've been provided the details on it. It still seems high. But that's the way things work in public sector. I just seems there's three thousand seven hundred dollars worth of vehicle and equipment charges. I assume that's transportation for the inspectors.
That's correct.
Is there a way we can have that inspector local?
If there's somebody that's qualified to do that, I mean, they have to be. Is that an engineer that does the inspections or who, what kind of certification and training do they, are they required to have? I mean, we have a lot of regulations to follow, so.
Sure there are, and I, that's why it's, it's questioned. It's not a.
They don't, they don't have to be a licensed engineer.
Okay, do they have to have any? So some basic certifications. We can certainly talk to John and look into it.
Just ask staff, look for ways to save every nickel, every dime. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Vodden?
Ah, yes, I, I'd like to underscore Councilmember Thomas's observation, the use of the word egregious. And I did not think that there might be ways of reducing the cost, but now I would simply ask, not simply, but sincerely ask that we reach into this bid, into the individuals involved and ask them to reduce these costs. Now, if that's impossible, having done many, many bids and having many inspector situations, I would ask and almost insist on documented evidence that they put in the time. Showing up in half hour late and leaving a half hour early and charging us for the full boat is unacceptable to me and it would offend me. We have told the citizens of Willows that we are going to count every penny and spend it like it was our money. And I see this as our money, meaning their money. So it doesn't break me on my heart at all to simply say, I'm sorry, we need help. You need to cut the costs and you need to follow the orders. If they show up a half hour late and leave a half hour early, I just wouldn't pay them at all.
Well, the inspector is actually part of the subcontract from Coastland, correct?
That's, that's correct.
So Coastland works with us. Thank you.
And by the way, this is a Livermore company for the record, right? It's a Livermore company, Livermore, California? I'm sorry, say that again? This company is from Livermore, correct?
Yes.
I just wanted to make that note.
Any further, Mr. Vodden?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any further comments, gentlemen?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. The Sycamore Park section, the largest section of this project, is that not covered at all under the grant that we got? Is none of that improvement going to be covered underneath that grant?
Uh, no, Vice Mayor Hudson, it was not included in the original scope as part of the grant. That particular section of sidewalk, yes, was not included.
Okay. And then I, I see on here, so we're getting charged, you brought up the vehicles, we're being charged a hundred and fifty five hours dollars per hour of your guys' vehicle usage? Is that what, is that, am I reading the, the last page on this correctly? Okay.
Yes, you are.
I mean, rent you guys like a Ford Fiesta for like fifty bucks a day and count it that way? For the fifteen days or?
You know, it is funny, which your point is well made, Evan. This is a pattern of behavior of dealing with government is charging whatever you can and getting away with it.
Yeah, I just, I, like I said, it's different dealing with government, you know, I mean, our lowest bid's forty seven thousand, our highest is ninety one. So it's just, like I said, this has been.
I just want to remind the council, this is not general fund money. This is primarily R S T P funds.
No, I know. And I understand that. Just.
Thank you.
We can make the dollar stretch, you know, that's always our, our goal, right? So, no, thank you for clarifying. I just had those two quick questions. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Sprague, any comments?
Uh, yes, I would just point out to the city manager that all of those funds are still taxpayers' funds, no matter which pocket it might be coming out of. Thank you.
I, I'm aware of that. Thank you.
Yeah, just, you know, to point out, you know, there were four bids received. The low bid wa- is, is the bid that we're discussing currently, and that's at forty seven thousand seventy five dollars. The high bid was ninety one thousand six hundred dollars. The engineer's estimate, our city engineer, John Wanger, who is outstanding at what he does, his estimate for the project was at fifty one thousand dollars. So just to point out to the council that, that the, the bid is approximately, you know, uh, four thousand plus lower than the anticipated estimate for the project. So that is a positive. Any further questions, comments from the council? Any public comments on this matter this evening? Yes, sir? Yeah, please, please approach that, put in. It's, uh, it's not required, but it is appreciated if you do state your name for the record also. Thank you.
Yes, guys, so the price is forty something thousand, forty seven for eleven hundred, twelve hundred linear feet.
It's eleven hundred square feet of sidewalk, approximately two hundred and seventy five.
I mean, I'm a contractor in town, C eight, that's what I do. Down in Sacramento, I could do this for half the price. Pay prevailing wage. It's a pretty extreme price. That is through the roof. Need special inspections for compaction and all. Get it. Correct. That's kind of what the inspection prices are.
That's why we hire an engineer, because I have no idea.
Yeah, it's pretty, that, that, that price is wild. I'm just saying, we need to reach out to like local contractors maybe and keep the money here and you guys could do twice the work for the money. That's a lot of money for.
Yeah, we vote for that.
If our local contractors followed the process and, and submitted bids.
I mean, what is that, forty five dollars a square foot roughly? Somewhere in there. That's pretty high.
Rick's point is you need to bid. I mean, it starts.
I still know when they go out, we don't have companies that, you know, we don't have people on our payroll that can scour the websites and be nice. We got a heads up, local guys. We could save you guys a lot of money and.
Are they not posted to the website?
They go to.
Yes, they are.
So a big problem we run into is, is the prevailing wage reporting through Department of Industrial Relations is a lot of the a lot of contractors, yeah, once you're over the, the twenty five thousand, you get into the mandatory reporting of the prevailing wage is where you're turning in your actual certified payroll to the Department of Industrial Relations. And so once we hit over twenty five thousand and new work, that's where we kind of run into on those problems. A lot of times we can do, we get a lot of the local guys that'll do the under twenty five thousand or fifteen thousand for maintenance, but it's such a heavy reporting requirement and so much money that a lot of them stay away from that. Not saying that you do, Travis, but it's, it's usually where we hit our, our shortfall is that mandatory certified payroll reporting to the Department of Industrial Relations for public works projects that really stifles it. Prevailing wage is one thing, which is required on everything, but that reporting is a, is a very heavy load of, of accounting and reporting to the Department of Industrial Relations. So just, just as a note. Yeah.
No, I understand that. We have a D I R number. We've done all this stuff. I mean.
Yep.
I mean, it is paying the, the pain, but it's very doable. It's not that difficult. I mean, eleven hundred square feet, that's doable in three, four days. That's a pretty small job. It's a lot of money. Pay forty seven thousand dollars for that. That's all I'm just saying.
Yeah, and if I, I know we're not supposed to talk to folks, but I would aggressively pursue opportunities to bid on these things because you care for the city.
I mean, the, just the concrete's only thirty two hundred bucks for that project. I mean, very much more material. I mean, very much more material. If you buy four, a little bit of rebar, you know, eighteen hundred rebar. Pretty high numbers. I mean, you know, construction costs are. I don't have, I don't have to get rich to survive, but that's a lot of money. If I did that for forty-seven, I could walk with twenty-eight grand in a week. That's a heck of a week.
Good week.
I'm just saying, I wish you'd get, think about it. That's a lot of money, a little amount of work.
Well, a weekly check of our website for all of the RFPs that we have would give you that opportunity and we would encourage you to bid.
I'd like to.
Please.
Yeah, we absolutely encourage local contractors to bid, you know, and as, as you, you're aware and, and as Joe Ben Court indicated, municipal bids are labor intensive is one of the problems by law, unfortunately. But we, we definitely would love to see local contractors bid on, on all of the projects about the RFPs from the city.
That'd be nice to work here, going all the way to Mary River.
Absolutely, absolutely. And like is, is, as a city manager stated that the RFPs are all posted on, on the city web, website.
It'd be nice. Thank you, guys. Appreciate the time.
Thank you. Thank you, Travis.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other public comments on this matter this evening? Any other public comments? Anything else from the council?
I, I would just ask Joe, is there anything that prohibits a gentleman like this to be able to ask to be put on your list when you ask for RFPs?
Um, so a lot of times it goes through a bidding website, which is, I believe, how this went through. So that if you're signed up on that bidding website, you'd be notified that it's going out, but what we can do is develop, work on developing internal lists of local vendors, and then we'd send emails out to them when we have jobs that kind of fit their category. So there's, there's things in the works that we want to be able to notify these people better, maybe for the short term, Facebook posts, things like that, until we can kind of get our, our software figured out for developing those lists. But working towards a way that we, we get contractors in and develop a list per skill trade basically, and then we would notify them of bids that kind of meet that trade that they're in.
Okay. That give you some direction, a little bit, maybe a little?
Anything further, gentlemen? I'm fine. Anything further from staff, Mr. Mayor? Pleasure of the council in reference to item five B, consideration of the award of contract for the U.S. Bureau twenty-three, twenty-four annual sidewalk, sidewalk maintenance project.
Was it six B or five B?
Oh, did I say, I'm sorry.
Six B.
It is six. Did I say five? Six, item six B, six B.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we reject the proposal and send the project out for new bidding.
I would second that.
Mr. Vodden has moved to reject the proposal in reference to item six B and send it back for additional bidding. Mr. Sprague has seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Did I hear two or three ayes? I heard Mr. Vodden.
I have not answered yet. I don't know where to go with this.
It's a tough one, but it's called tough love.
Is the motion clear? Is the motion clear to reject the bid? Let's go to a roll call vote, please. Mr. Mr. City Clerk?
Can I ask a question first?
Yes, absolutely, Mr. Thomas.
To staff, Joe, what does that do for you and the staff?
Uh, we would, we would reply the project basically probably the same way that we did this go around, except we would try to bring in local vendors and advertise it either on Facebook or a little more aggressively. If that's, if that's the, the desire, we can start that right now and just get it out. The bid rejection part would have to do with the actual work itself. The, the inspection is not provided by the contractor. So we would, we can look at options on both of those with a rebid, but it'd be recirculating.
So we're discussing just the forty-seven thousand, not the entire?
Would we be at risk of not getting a similar bid and getting a bid higher than that?
Absolutely, but we'd obviously notify the, the existing, the four bids that we did receive would all be re notified that we're going back out for this.
Three of them would be happy. Well, maybe.
So any, any further questions, comments? Mr. Ben Court, this is STIP funding, correct?
Yep.
STIP funding. If this, I'm sorry, Marty.
RSTP.
RSTP, RSTP funding. With the RSTP funding, if, if this bid is rejected, does that, does that put that funding in jeopardy in any way?
I would need probably council opinion on that. Ian may, may know better than me. If you're, you're rejecting the bid based on price, as long as you've got a valid reason for rejecting, I think that you're good and.
There would be no financial penalty for rejecting.
The money hasn't been spent yet, so I think we'd be, be fine with that.
Very good. That would be my, that would be my only concern.
Does the money have a sunset that we have to use it by?
This, this does not, I don't believe, no.
No, no.
Does not?
No, it rolls over per fiscal year.
Thank you. Can I ask the condition of the sidewalks that we're looking at replacing? What are they, what are the conditions right now? If we're pushing, if we end up pushing this project, I'm assuming it's about a three-month pushback if we reject it, correct?
Yeah, I mean, the sooner the better, but the fact of the matter is, is there's, there's plenty of sidewalks in bad conditions that aren't going to be fixed with this money as well. Um, we, we always like to eliminate liability as quickly as possible, as quickly as possible, but price consideration is always a part of that as well. So I don't, I don't think it's going to cause a major issue compared to the, the, some of the other sidewalks.
The, the subject of sidewalk repair and the issues with our sidewalks caused by the trees and other things has been a long time sore subject. If we can rebid this project and save substantial money, in my mind, it means we can use the savings to do more sidewalk improvements or safety and aesthetics and all of the above.
Thank you, Mr. Vodden. Anything further?
No, I'm, it's a tough decision. I mean, we have the, we have the bids, we have the, everything's in line to get four sections of sidewalk fixed, done now. You know, and obviously with future plans of hopefully involving more local contractors to come around at least next go around. So it's a tough spot between saving money or fixing, you know, a potential liability hazard now.
I think it's also worth noting that, you know, you could end up going out to bid again, and there is a whole process that, that we go through to make sure that the bids are, you know, what we call qualified, responsible bidders. You have to go through that checklist. You could end up with bidders, the other three people, for example, that you mentioned, Councilmember Vodden, that are higher, and the lowest bidder decides not to participate, and you end up with a higher bid because those that are qualified, responsible bidders, it's a smaller, it's a small list. Because we reject, we reject bidders all the time.
And, I'm sorry, anything?
No, I'm, I know kind of where my head's at.
All for the vote.
The, just also like to comment that John Wanger, our contract city engineer and the principal of Coastland Civil Engineering, which presented this, this matter. Uh, Coastland treats us extremely fairly, extremely fairly on their pricing, overall pricing. We have an outstanding relationship with, with Coastland and with John Wanger. They do outstanding workforce and have done for many years. And we've got a really good deal working with Coastland Civil Engineering. I just want to, I just want to point that out. And this is the low bid, the low bid presented. So the risk, I, I understand, I, I understand both sides of the argument. At least there aren't any financial penalties, if you will. We're not, we're not risking the RSTP funding, which is, which is a positive. But it's like, I guess, like playing a hand of twenty-one, I guess, actually.
Well, I, I would simply say that it's just business. It's not personal. The, the people involved are all wonderful, I'm sure, and honorable. It's business, and in business, you gotta sometimes do things and take a few risks. I don't see any downside to, to doing this over.
Well, I understand, but, but you're still going to have your, your contingency and your construction management and inspection costs. In addition, you know, they have to be done. They have to be done, done by law. And, you know, that, that puts the estimated total, as we know, at sixty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven approximately, with the low bid being forty, just over forty-seven thousand. So it is a risk. It, it could end up costing more money. So.
My bad. Ask a question?
Absolutely.
Joe, Ian, is there a, a simple list that's out there? So let's say a new contractor that wants to get involved in doing state projects like this that they can run down? That's pretty easy, or is it kind of a lot of legwork on their end to make sure they're got all their Ts crossed and Is dotted? You know, I mean, like, is there like an easy checklist that the city has in place to make sure that they can qualify for one of our bids or is there?
Yeah, go ahead. Um, yes, so as part of our bid package, there is a bidder's checklist that's required to be filled out that lists each individual item that's required for responsive bids, and that does help respective bidders.
Okay. And I'll, I'll just add to that, too, with trying to get a, a group of local vendors signed up, you know, the kind of more long-term goal of having people that we notify is that we'll, we'll create a checklist for them as well, you know, so somebody's not thinking they're eligible for a job and, and go, oh, gosh, I gotta have this insurance, I gotta have this, you know, to, to let them know upfront before they waste their time because it can be cumbersome, but that's something we want to get.
And that's what I, my biggest concern is, is we reject this, we have them go through that, and then there's one little piece of that pie that's missing. Then our low bid goes away, you know, and then we're, all the money we're supposed to save, now we're doubling our costs.
They do, they do a good job because nobody likes to really reject low prices on, on weird stuff that doesn't come through, right? So their, their checklist is pretty, make sure if you can check those boxes that your bid's going to be seen as responsive to that. So they, they do a good job of lining out everything that's needed in order to be on that project.
And it's, yeah.
I've helped people with trying to get bonds in order to bid city positions before, and they didn't know until the day of.
Yeah.
Trying to get that bond in place that day is really hard for them to go out and go start doing that, that bidding project. So that's, you know, that's, I know that there are some hangups like that that can cause people not.
Performance bond, payment bond, yeah, all, all the good stuff, though, but they, having it in front of everybody so they know, it just eliminates the, there's no misunderstanding when it's in black and white or less of a chance of, of one, I guess.
I just want to repeat, all we're asking is that we rebid the project, not change the bidding procedures or any of the risks associated therein.
No, I'm, I understand that. I'm just concerned that you tell FBD Vanguard Construction, no, your price is too high, and then they don't come back, you know? And I don't know, I don't know what the other three prices are at, but if they're all seventy and above, we're almost doubling our costs. So.
Call for the vote, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes. Joe, I'm a little bit concerned if I understand this, the, the company that we've awarded this to is Livermore, out of Livermore, which there's got to be a lot of construction going on up there. Now, it's been fifteen years since I've built anything particular, but I know that we have or had local contractors, Don Ward, for instance, Bogart, Knife River, a few of the others that are local. Did they not respond at all to, to our RFP, those local, any of those local contractors from Chico, Red Bluff, ready?
I don't, I don't think anybody was local. No.
That's a little perplexing that somebody from Livermore would.
And it, yeah, sometimes the sites, depending on the different, you know, if it's plan up bids or different sites that people are associated with, they, they're getting the, the notification and bidding on these jobs. So we do see out of town people as much as we see local or more.
I'm sorry.
We, we see out of town people as much as we see local. If they're larger companies and they've got a couple guys that are, they just need, need a quick job, they'll, they'll put in for it. So, but.
They're looking for a fifteen-day fill-in while they're, they're in their big.
But we'll definitely work to make sure we get the word out better through the, you know, View, Glen, surrounding areas to try to get some.
I would make a concerted effort to do an outreach to locals to see if we could do some of this, especially these, this is a fairly small job. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, you know, and, and, and is, the discussion has, you know, has included this evening that municipal bids are, are laborious, unfortunately. By law, and that does drive some of the local contractors away from even wanting to spend so much time on them. And then with the additional requirements that municipal entities also must have in place. So I, it'd be great if we had local, local contractors. It'd be great if every local contractor bid on, on, on all of our local jobs, but we don't see that, and I suspect that's a major reason. You know, you know, our discussion centers on, on those different, different issues. Probably alluding to the, the, the reason why they don't, you know, so many of them don't bid on local jobs. So I'm, I'm in favor of Joe, you putting a, you know, a comprehensive list together.
Call for the vote, Mr. Mayor.
I agree.
I will.
There's a parliamentary procedure.
I will, well, absolutely, and I'm following a parliamentary procedure. Mr. Vodden, thank you very much. I do like that, that proposal moving forward. So there is a a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded to reject this bid. This will be a roll call vote to reject the bid. Mr. City Clerk?
Councilmember Thomas?
No.
Councilmember Sprague?
Yes.
Councilmember Vodden?
Yes.
Councilman, Vice Mayor Hudson?
Yes.
And Mayor Hudson?
Nay. So we have three yea votes, correct?
Yes, that's three, two.
The bid being rejected. Thank you very much. Moving on to item six C, retail dispensary cannabis businesses, modify distance requirements. Consider adoption of a resolution eliminating distance requirements between retail dispensary cannabis businesses and churches, licensed daycare, playgrounds, indoor parks, and reducing the distance requirements to five hundred feet between retail dispensary cannabis businesses and preschool through grade twelve schools, and consider allowing retail dispensary cannabis businesses in additional zoning. City Manager Marty Brown, would you like to begin?
Um, I, no, I think that Joe's got this covered really well. He's worked long and hard on it, and it got continued from the last meeting, so take it away, Joe.
Very good. Mr. Ben Court, our Community Development Services Director, Joe?
Uh, thank you, Mayor and council members. I'll go through a little history here. So we're, we're basically looking at, um, back in two thousand seventeen, a resolution was passed that established the ability to have retail cannabis dispensary licenses issued within the city of Willows. Uh, that was capped at two licenses. Um, so overall, there would never be any more than two licenses issued for active dispensaries at this time. Um, and that came with, like you said, they could not be located within a thousand feet of any church, elementary school, middle school, high school, licensed daycare, preschool facility, playground or parks. Um, and if you look at attachment three, that's a, our contract planner drew that up. I won't say it's a hundred percent accurate, but gives you a really good idea of the limited space that a, a dispenser would have to operate in. Um, that thousand-foot distance from that many different establishments basically creates a small area in the south of Willows uh, that you'd be able to do that, uh, to have a dispensary. Um, and that would involve new construction. Nothing's developed on that part of town. So it becomes pretty cost prohibitive for any, anybody to come in and build a brick and mortar shop to open a dispensary. Um, I don't think we're getting too many brick and mortar anythings at this point in the economy. Um, so it's kind of just been a barrier to the establishment of a dispensary. Uh, in the past, we've issued an RFP and received, in order to seek proposals from people who wanted to open dispensaries in our area, we received one proposal from Sundial Collective in, um, April twenty-twenty-two. And they eventually went through all the hoops, basically, and were approved by the city council, got their license approved, bought the land out in South Willows, but have made no, no further communication with us or progress towards developing the building of a dispensary. Uh, so this, this again is to relax distancing requirements. Um, you can see in attachment four, um, it shows you what it would look like if we went to a, a five hundred foot distance from preschool through twelfth grade. Um, and it's got the zoning as a backsplash to it. I will make a, a small correction on there. Um, in reading the code, um, it looks like the, the current zoning that is allowed is highway commercial and then mixed use, which is general, commercial, light, industrial and planned development. That's the purple color. And then also general, commercial slash planned development, which is the, the bright pink color. The clarification I'd like to make is on that map and where you'll see in the, the report, I listed general, commercial as an allowable zone when it is actually just the mixed zones that contain general, commercial. Um, so that's kind of the second part of it as well is considering, you know, not only the, the requirements and the setbacks from changing that to just five hundred feet from a school, but if any additional zoning wanted to be added, um, that could be discussed at this point and brought back at a future date. So, yeah, kind of, uh, and just, just as a, because it speaks to this in the staff report, but as, as comfort of allowing it, you know, closer to schools themselves and not having a thousand foot, pushing them all the way out of town, um, there's very strict guidelines set up by the state. Um, they actually have to hire a security guard who has to be has to hold certain certifications that sits in basically the lobby or out. has to hold certain certifications that sits in basically the lobby or outside of the retail space. And he checks IDs and runs them through a system before anyone's allowed into the retail marijuana part of it. Um, there's required, uh, video cameras at certain resolutions, uh, required operational hours from six AM to ten PM at night. Um, and other secure majors, security majors in place, uh, to hopefully, you know, curb any chance of anybody underage accessing the facility. Yeah, so with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bent. Councilmembers, questions, comments? Would you like to begin?
I have a couple of questions.
Mr. Sprague.
Thank you. First off, just an observation, Joe.
Yeah.
I know your dad.
Uh huh.
And your dad was well commended and appreciated for his efforts some fifteen, twenty years ago and what he dubbed is not in my town.
Yep.
Or not in our town. Um, so given your family's history, this seems to be a little bit incongruent to maybe what I would understand, but nevertheless, it's just an observation, not a criticism.
Yeah, I would just speak to that to say that, you know, these are, it's a legal product, just like alcohol is. It's got more requirements than you have at a liquor store. At a liquor store, you don't have somebody checking your ID before you go in. Um, so I'm one of those people that really looks as a a person's right to do what they want within the law and not being a barrier to those things that they used to be with the with the limited, you know, obviously, security and protection is important too.
And I recall when the law passed and what was allowable then to be able to put certain restrictions on and so on. So let me understand as well, we don't actually have an applicant, if I understood you correctly uh, during your introduction here, that you actually or the city actually sent out RFPs to potential end users?
Originally, there was an RFP release that sought to, um, see if there was any interest in our community on bringing somebody in. So just as you would an RFP for the sidewalk project, this was a giant packet that had all the requirements, all the costs associated with it. Um, and it was, yeah, sent out to attract marijuana dispensaries to Willows. Um, and that's where Sundial Collective came in and responded to that RFP.
Well, I would I would disagree with your correlation of an RFP for sidewalks for something that's actually necessary and needed as opposed to something.
It was a solicitation, I guess, is what it was. It was a a big document release to encourage bringing in an applicant.
Okay. Couple of other questions here in regard to this. First off, it seemed like this might be, from my perspective, something that should have started with the planning commission as opposed to bringing it directly to the city council. Am I missing something there?
No, this is a resolution passed by the, uh, city council, not the planning commission. The planning commission received direction in order to establish the zoning requirements. And then that's where they established the the zoning part of it, but it was a resolution passed by, uh, passed by city council, setting the one thousand foot setbacks. And then on that same resub, uh, resolution, city council gave direction to the planning commission to explore which zones they wanted to allow for that.
Okay, last question here, I think, and well, let me second the last question. Would we not be required to do a three hundred foot notice for some modification like this to put put it out to all the property owners that might be impacted and and have interest in this particular ordinance?
I'm not sure on the three hundred foot notice, uh, that would probably come about when we had an applicant and they would, normally it's when they're sighted at a specific location. We would send out three hundred foot notices on that specific notification. We wouldn't send it out for.
Okay, so that would.
Without having a business in a location, I believe.
Conditional use permit process then would.
These are all conditional use permits. Yeah, none are allowed by planning commission without a conditional use permit.
Okay, second thing is the resolution, past resolution as well as the proposed resolution makes reference several times to ordinance. Would this not be then an ordinance that should be adopted with the resolution or not?
This, the original resolution was passed outside of the ordinance with reference to the ordinance. So we just came back with the resolution in the same manner that the original was passed. So no, the ordinance was passed first, this resolution came afterwards. Actually, there's an ordinance and then a modification to the ordinance, and then this resolution came in and set, uh, some additional requirements, um, including the setbacks with it. So there's no reference to our current ordinance of any thousand foot setbacks, only this resolution.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I yield at this point. I might have some further questions after I hear others.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sprague. Vice Mayor Hudson?
Yeah, so this actually kind of came about from me walking up to the counter and having a conversation with Joe on this. You know, I so I kind of asked a question as to why we have a thousand foot rule, and he's kind of gave me the back history on it. And to be honest with you, to me, this rule does not make sense. The a thousand feet from all these different places, when you're talking about one of the more secure stores that will be inside our city, it's actually more secure than the banks because the banks don't ID everybody. They're not checking your ID before you even allowed to go shopping in there. You have liquor stores, you have bars, all within a thousand feet of all the places that we can't have another legal business. Um, and I believe all five of us have agreed that we need revenue to our city. We need new businesses. And we need to think outside the box. Here's our opportunity. Here's a way for us to gain great tax revenue. Be the first one in Glen County. People are doing it whether we agree to this or not. They're either having it delivered, they're going out and buying it and bringing it back to their house from another town. So it's a market that I believe that the city can capitalize on. Um, and unlike a bar, people are buying it, they're going home, they're using it. It has medicinal purposes, uh, it's clean, it's safe. I believe a couple meetings ago, we had a medical director here talking about how, uh, drugs are laced with fentanyl now. This is a a way to offer people the same access legally and safe. And I just know there's a lot of uses and I know a lot of people out there use it. So that's kind of my two cents on it. It's safe, it's legal. Why not? That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Mr. Button?
Well, um, you know, it's an emotional subject, but, um, I don't think that making a decision based on emotional and personal bias and preference and feelings uh, is worthy of violating the right of a human or a business or a commodity, in this case marijuana, to be sold when it is legal to do so under the laws of the state and otherwise. But so I support you, Evan, with the idea that not, I agree with the income thing, but I morally more, I agree with the idea that that the right of the of a person, a business owner, a whatever, to pursue a business under the law which is legal should not be denied because of personal feelings about the subject.
And if I may add to that, I mean, honestly, the old mandate, it's an overstep of governmental power. You're 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 taking something that's legal and still telling everyone, no. To me, that's an overstep of of the power that we're supposed to be holding up here. So. Well, thank you, David. Sorry.
Anything further, Mr. Button?
No, thank you, sir.
Mr. Thomas?
Uh, yes, um, when I look at this and I think a thousand feet, um, if it's worried, if the folks are worried that it's sending a message to our youth or some other folks about, um, its availability, I really doubt that any high school kid's not going to know where that is, whether it's five hundred feet, a thousand feet or on in Orland. They're going to know where this establishment is, but they have to be over a certain age in order to access it. I think, um, it would be appropriate. I know it limited it churches, and I know we have churches scattered throughout town. Question is, are those churches properly placed? Do they have the proper use permit to be where they are? I don't know. But I don't think, um, an establishment that is organized and protected such as one of these establishments, and I have been in one, I went to the one in Chico. And in order to get in, you have to have a driver's license, you have to present yourself. Only certain number of folks are are left in. So, uh, my partner who had, um, injury to one of her knees was using this heated oil and it worked. So I I am in support of reducing the five hundred feet. I'm sure we have many here that are going to offer other sides of the story, and I would forward him some.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Well, it's, you know, it, uh, the marijuana ordinance that we have in place, uh, was, uh, I was a member of the city council at the time that that ordinance was crafted and ultimately enacted, uh, many months of work went into the ordinance. My sole reason for, uh, in the end, voting for the ordinance, even after, you know, uh, a number of several decades in law enforcement, uh, uh, fighting, uh, you know, enforcing the law, marijuana is a schedule one drug, however, it is is now a legal product, law pro, as we know in the state of California. My only reason for voting, uh, in favor of the ordinance in the end was, uh, hoping that it would help drive the illicit drug activity out of our neck of the forest and other areas uh, in the end. So we all have our different opinions on it. You probably figured out where I'm at on it. I, uh, was in favor of the one thousand, uh, setback, one thousand foot radius from these various, uh, you know, entities listed, churches, uh, schools, so on and so forth. I also brought forward the, uh, the licensed daycare center was my was my request. And that was ultimately enacted by the city council. And, uh, my opinion hasn't wavered on it at all, at all. I do, uh, uh, appreciate the the Red Bluff City Council ordinance that was presented. And they have a six hundred foot setback, correct, Joe?
Yeah, that is correct.
Long missed documents here, but, uh, uh, missed my notes, but uh, I would be, you know, I would be in favor of of a of a six hundred, maybe even a five hundred set setback. But I won't waiver on, uh, licensed daycare centers or preschool, absolutely not, absolutely not. Uh, in my mind, I I think that creates some kind of a, you know, just a just a safe zone, if you will. I know it's heavily regulated, obviously. It's heavily regulated. I'm not, I'm not trying to be a, you know, stuck in the mud here. I don't think that marijuana use is the answer to all of our ailments and, you know, in society. But, you know, we all have our opinions. That's that's my opinion. The way this ordinance is crafted in the city of Willows, there are basically two areas that, uh, our ordinance allows for up to a maximum of two dispensaries. For the audience, if you're you're not aware of this, our current ordinance, there cannot be more than two dispensaries.
Is that citywide?
Citywide, two, yes, yes, two, a maximum of the current law, our current ordinance, uh, allows a maximum of two dispensaries within the city limits. And basically, those areas are South Willows, the Basin Street Development Area, Ken Road fifty-seven and ninety-nine, or Kama Street Area, and also, uh, a number of locations along the freeway running, basically. By the time you take these thousand foot radius circles around the schools, the parks, the playgrounds, licensed daycares, licensed daycare centers, because unlicensed daycare centers are illegal, right? And there are a number of those. We all know there are illicit marijuana operations in the city limits. Okay, we're not idiots, right? We all know that. We probably all also know who most of those individuals are that are currently selling marijuana illegally. And mind and 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 mindfully cheaper than anybody in a retail dispensary business, correct? Because they don't have to follow the laws. They don't follow the law. But they don't. So it's a complicated subject. We all have our different opinions on it. I just wanted to let let my colleagues on the council, since we have not had the discussion in open session, know where where I stand on this. I do like, uh, parts of the the Red Bluff ordinance that I see. But I'd be curious to hear what our our fine citizens in city Willows, uh, have to say on the on the topic tonight, and that's why I'm sure almost all of you are here. So, uh, uh, we'll we'll take public comments now on this matter at this time. Uh, we'll hear everyone, uh, who would like to begin?
May I add one thing?
Oh, yes, Mr. Hudson.
Sorry, so, um, one thing I did do was I did talk to some other city council members of cities that do have an or a dispensary inside their city limits. And they said that they've actually been some of the most upstanding businesses that they have in their communities. Um, and when they do talk to their sheriffs or chiefs of their law enforcement agencies, they did not see any uptick in crime or violence. And that they've actually prefer to have a legal cannabis facility rather than dealing with the illegal drug sales that are currently happening. I say that talking of other cities. I have not personally talked to our sheriff about that. Even though I did want to get his opinion, I unfortunately have not had a chance to to converse with him on it. Because obviously, you know, law enforcement dealing with, you know, a substance like that is a big thing, you know, where there's been some big, big busts around our area for that. So, uh, you know, and that's obviously one opinion that I wish I would have gotten before, you know, this means. I didn't just haven't had the chance to make contact with him yet, so. But that, like I said, that's, this isn't a new a new thing anymore. When it was brand new, there was a lot of a lot of bad publicity, a lot of bad things happening. It's been refined. It's kind of, I look at it kind of like solar, right? Solar first came out, there was a lot of bad contracts that were done, a lot of bad deals. It didn't work very well. Now it's fine tuned, it runs like a charm, you know? People are doing it everywhere. It's one of those things where the kinks have been worked out of it. And I think now is kind of the time to to finally kind of jump on board and, you know, we're not the test subject anymore. Now we're now we're joining it, I think, at the right time.
Well, Evan, your points are well taken. I mean, I agree with with you with your thoughts and comments, and you're absolutely spot on, correct? On, I mean, you know, the, you know, the the safe operations of of the different, uh, the dispensaries in the state of California. And in twenty seventeen, also your points are well taken, and in twenty seventeen, when this ordinance was crafted, it was brand brand new, hot off the press. That's why we have such a comprehensive, uh, ordinance, ordinance on, you know, in reference to the subject. So very good. Thank you, Evan. Uh, Mr. Button?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would encourage anybody who has a strong opposition to this for any number of reasons to read the rules, regulations that apply under the law as defined within the definition of opening one of these stores. It's amazing what you have to go through. So I say that not because it's cumbersome or otherwise, but because the laws that they have to operate when we in fact allow them to are significantly designed to to assure a quality outcome. We receive the benefits and let people have their rights, but at the same time, not produce or introduce anything negative into the community. It's overwhelming, wouldn't you agree, Evan? And if you read those, you will probably leave the the read or the discussion going, okay, it's 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 covered.
Yeah, it's it's definitely a high bar for, uh,
Very high bar.
lawful dispensaries, uh, you know, to meet all the requirements by state law and also by our ordinance to, uh, to operate lawful business. Anything further, Mr. Button?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Like to open it up for public comment now, uh, everyone will be heard. Who would like to begin? Yes, ma'am. Please approach for me. It's it's not required, although, uh, uh, it is appreciated if you do state your name for the record, although it's not required. And, uh, our, everyone will be heard. Let's let's try to, uh, avoid repetitive comments if we can, so we can move forward tonight. And, uh, uh, it is, uh, we do allow three minutes for public comment and, you know, we're 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 pretty loose on that, but it it is, let's, everyone will be heard, but let's kind of just move along, okay? So thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Kathy Gilmore? And I'm just here to say that I think that this is an opportunity that we really need to seize. Um, we need the money desperately. And I think that this is something that we really need to take hold of. We need to do one, and then we need to turn right around and do another one quick. Because we need the influence right away. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. All right, who would like to come? Yes, ma'am. Yeah, please.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
My name is Janay Coram. And, um, I'm speaking on this item because I am grateful that the city manager and council are seeking additional businesses for our community because we desperately need them. However, I do not believe that changing the ordinance needs to take place for us. While I understand the intent behind the proposal, I urge you to consider the significant and far reaching consequences that adopting such a resolution could entail. Despite the fact that you must be twenty-one years old to purchase marijuana, unfortunately, I can assure you that our youth has access. With over twenty-five years of experience and education, I have seen in sixteen years as a school counselor, I have witnessed junior high and high school students obtaining and bringing marijuana onto school grounds. Throughout my career, I have counseled students to help them overcome their substance abuse so that they can ultimately achieve their academic goals. Reducing this, uh, distance requirement um, does increase a risk to our children. It allows them opportunity. The proximity of such establishments could normalize the presence and use of cannabis, potentially leading to higher rates of experimentation and use among our youth. It is also important to address the potential for increased crime and safety concerns. I know you mentioned your side, but I believe that it does show I know you mentioned your side, but I believe that it does show. Higher rates of crime, especially amongst our youth. And this is not a risk we should be willing to take lightly, especially when we do not have our own police department and must rely on county sheriff. With the current one thousand foot setback. It may present challenges to current investors. Your own rationale states it's nearly impossible. So that means it is possible for them to establish a retail business here in town. I urge you to consider the long-term implementations of this proposal. The safety, health, and well-being of our children should be paramount. Let us prioritize our children over short-term commercial gains. I respectfully ask that you reject this proposal and uphold the current distance requirements to protect our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Who would like to speak next? Anyone, please? Uh, yes, sir. Sir, we'll get you next, Phil. Yes, sir. Jason, good evening.
Hi, I'm Jason Grant, uh, owner of Brickyard Gym, uh, also pastor of the Art Christian Center here in town. Um, I just wanna echo. Um, Ms. Corman's, uh, Corman's comments that. This opens the door to something that we won't be able to close again. We're gambling with the next generation. We're thinking that this is safe. And they won't have access to it, but if you go to a high school, junior high campus now, how many of those kids are carrying vapes? Which they shouldn't be able to carry. And so what we're doing is we're just opening the door a little wider while covering our eyes a little more. Saying that they won't have access to it doesn't mean they won't. One of the key things that she said is that this normalizes. And that means it becomes more normal, that our consciences become more hardened. In our risks to the next generation, it's our responsibility to take care of them. Now, I'm a champion for the free market. I believe in the free market with all my heart. I live for the free market. I've been an independent businessman for most of my adult life. I have worked with businesses by the skin of my teeth. I know what it's like to just go after your dream. But at the same time, I love driving down the freeways when I know where the boundaries are. And it's our responsibility to make sure that we help paint those boundaries for the next generation. And so I have with me right now at least thirty signatures of people that basically support the current. Ordinance and the way that is written. And this was just from about fifteen to twenty minutes of having conversations with local people. On the street, in my gym, around the church, around town. It wasn't that I went gangbusters and started to ring the bell and, and pull the fire alarm. I just did a sample poll. And one hundred percent of the time when I asked an adult. I said, what do you think about reducing the ordinance from one thousand feet to five hundred feet to the school? I didn't even mention the elimination. Of daycares, of churches, and other areas. I just said, reducing it from five hundred feet. Or to five hundred feet from a thousand, one hundred percent of them said, absolutely not. Are they crazy? That was their responses. So, Mr. Hanson, I appreciate the work that you did back in twenty seventeen. And there was a reason that you set those boundaries so strongly, and there's been a reason that we haven't seen things come into town now. And I appreciate the work that you did and I support it, and I don't want to see that it change. Neither do any of these people. Thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Grant. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Pleasure?
Good evening. My name is Joe Pleasure, and I've been a member of this community for about thirty years. Twenty, I think it's twenty-eight now. I've worked with at-risk kids for thirty years, plus thirty to thirty-five years, twenty-five of those years here. I have worked in our juvenile hall as, as, and I ran a program, well, for at-risk youth through that for several, like, I think it's thirteen years. I actually had the opportunity to get them their community service hours. I've been the juvenile justice commission. I've been sitting in your seat. Okay, and I've sat and watched. I'm the only one that voted no against the, the original thing on the seventeenth or whatever it was. That on two thousand seventeen. Uh, I've watched the downside of what happens with marijuana itself. The big question here is whether we move that distance, okay? The big thing about that I have with that is just because you can doesn't make it right. Just because it's legal doesn't mean that you have an obligation to follow the bat law. I've sat and listened to all five of you. I already know where the vote's gonna go. I can tell you where that vote's going because I sat up there and I watched it several times. So I'm just blowing hot air to begin with. But these kids, we owe them a responsibility. Because I have seen what happens to those kids. I've seen what happens to families with drugs and alcohol, alcohol. You guys mentioned as far as, oh, you gotta show a, uh, an ID once you get into the dispensary, okay? Well, you know what, you, I was pimping beer at sixteen years old, okay? It was illegal for me to do that, but we did it. You're gonna still have people from our high schools sitting there waiting for somebody there to do it. You do have, I don't care where you want to go, Humboldt County, you can go to, just ask what happens up there in Siskiyou County right now. It, with what's going on at the illegal thing. What has happened is all these dispensaries are coming in. And they sit there and they do it the legal way, and it's big and it's tough to get into. I get all of that. But it's also lowered the price in the, in the black market area, so where are they gonna go? They're not gonna go into that dispensary unless they wanna really get it for that. For that small amount that they need now because they can't find their regional dealer or the person that's gonna do it. They're not gonna do that. They're gonna go to that black market. Okay, there, that black market is out there. These kids know that. It's, we have our school right now at that thousand feet. I challenge each one, do you want that dispensary next door to your house? I assure you, I don't. Okay, and it is gonna bring in that criminal element, and I don't care who wants to say different because it does do that. Those people, some of those peoples, not all, you got the, you got the normal people that just have a hit here and there, but you mentioned the CBD oil. You can get all that medical stuff all just fine without the high. These people don't want that. They want the high. So I say, if you're gonna like lower that thousand foot. Um, perimeter thing to five hundred, yeah, it's five hundred feet, but still, that's that much closer to a school. That's that much closer, once they do actually obtain it. And say they do get their marijuana, and that's where their criminal element is, what if they're the ones that are that child predator? What is that they are? That brings them that much closer. That gives them a reason to. As a school, as, as a city, we have the responsibility. As to not follow. We, we have a whole bunch of followers out there in this world. Just because other cities do it, just because others counties do it and everything else, that doesn't make it right. And it doesn't mean that we don't have the responsibility to stand up and be counted to say, we're not in our city and not in our. Uh, in, in an area in which we have a responsibility to protect those that are, are cherished people, and that's our kids. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you, Pleasure. Thank you for your comments. Yes, Mr. Corum?
Evening, Keith. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Uh, it was stated, I, I have to tell you, I have my hearing aids turned up twice as loud tonight to hear everybody. And so when it was stated why this did not go through the planning commission. Because it was a zone change, which normally goes through a planning commission, I could not hear it. And can that be explained without taking my time?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Corum, absolutely. Uh, Mr. Van Court, could you address that topic?
So the, the zone change did go through the planning commission. They, they are the ones who recommended the zones to the city council on where they would like dispensaries to be placed. The resolution with the setbacks from churches, schools, daycares was a city council specific resolution. Does that clarify? So the zone change, on that same resolution, the city council gave a recommendation to the planning commission. To research zones and come up with the zones to approve for that, but the setbacks themselves were passed on a city council resolution.
Who, who recommended the uh, elimination?
The thousand foot elimination, that's a staff recommendation. Yeah.
Um, thank you, Joe.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mr. Corum, go ahead.
Oh, I thought some.
I was just, no, I was just thinking, I was just thinking, Joe. Thank you.
Um, I have sat in your seats also. And I am a retired county supervisor, so I know what things are like. I would hate to think that a decision of this gravity would be decided over money. Because our young people are worth much more than what money would come into the city coffers uh, by changing this. For nearly eight years, I sat on the uh, county of Glenn's Drug and Alcohol Abuse Committee. And I also went to court once a month generally to see those people who were graduating from the drug and alcohol court. Now stop and think, why do we have a drug and alcohol court? Because people abuse even legal drugs. And they find themselves in problems, and the only way they can get out of that, and especially if it's a legal reason. Uh, is to go to drug and alcohol court. One of the things that really struck me when I went there. The staff always took a picture of the individual when they were arrested. For whatever the reason was. It wasn't because of, uh, they had too much weed or any of that kind of stuff. They were maybe driving unsafe or they broke into someplace. Anyway, they would take that picture of what they looked like. It was horrible. You could see the damage that the drugs and alcohol were doing to that individual. After they spent their time working through the program. And they graduated, they pulled out that picture. And I don't think I ever saw anyone not shake their head. Because they could not believe how bad they looked at that time. Others have uh, already stated uh, different things. I am really concerned that you're going to, uh, at least as this is proposed, eliminate the distance. Uh, between cannabis businesses and churches and daycares and playgrounds. If anything, and I hate to even say this, I would hope that you would compromise and at least keep a five hundred foot. Distance between those things, just as you would through um, preschools and, and grade schools and high school. I remind you, as I finish, that you are to represent your constituency. We are your constituency. You are not to vote your personal feelings. It's hard, I know. So I would just encourage you to vote your constituency. And to think about the things that others have already stated tonight, and thank you for listening.
Thank, thank you for your comments, Mr. Corum. Uh, anybody else? Please? Yes, Mr. Ross, please. Evening, Doug. Good.
Address the mayor, which I believe is in the rules. Um, this, I'm neither for or against this proposal. Insistent on journalism, you know, it's there, you say it's there. So, but my remarks, Mr. Sprague earlier, uh, bringing up uh. Jim Bettencourt and NOIT, and uh, in short, I feel that um, his remarks about um. Ju- Jim, uh, Joe Bettencourt were a little bit colloquial. Uh, a little bit ad hominem. Um, I'm uh, and a little bit, um, whatever, a couple of other descriptions of things when you. Uh, say uh, something that to me didn't really pertain to the situation. I've interacted with Joe Bettencourt and Jim Bettencourt a lot. Jim, over the years, and Joe lately, when he became county staffer and then now a city staffer. And uh, I feel to see the relevance between Mr. Sprague's uh. Uh, tying uh, a like father, unlike son remark. It's, this may be a small town, but it's a big world. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for your comments, Mr. Ross. Any, any other public, uh, input, public comments? Anyone? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Well, you'll, you'll be next. Good evening.
My name's Judy Corum, so you've got all the Corums up here. I'm a retired HR director from Glen County Office of Education. I had many positions there. Uh, thirty years worth. But our main focus was always around the children of Glen County. I dealt mainly with staff, but you know, the kids were our main focus. Um, and I realize. Um, that we have to allow the business, you know, I mean, that's just, that's the way it is. Um, but I really um, don't think that we need to assist them. In providing a building and or modifying the distance to five hundred feet. Um, I understand people say this will bring in revenue. Um, there's been a lot of businesses that have attempted to come to Willows that would have brought in revenue. They, they never made it. Um, so I really would like to encourage you, um, gentlemen, to. Um, keep the thousand foot distance. And I've tried to think where that would be in town. Um, I don't know if people that have come to set up the business, they can't find a building. Or, you know, has it ever been stated what building they could use that would be a thousand feet? Do any of you know?
I don't, I don't.
You don't know the answer to that?
There, as far, as far as I understood, there really wasn't a building within city limits. Uh, the one dispensary I believe that did put in their application was gonna actually have to build their own.
Uh huh.
Um, instead of being able to look for a building to rent.
Right, okay.
But I, like I said, that's just from my.
Yeah, no, I appreciate your, your thoughts on that. So I guess my, my main objection is that. It's legal to have them here, bring their business, but we do not have to assist in providing that building. Um, within the thousand foot uh, distance, and I thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Corum. Yeah, and uh, yeah, Evan, yeah, there, there have been two applicants, two applicants.
Mm-hmm.
And, and both applications have, the processes. Two applicants.
But I do, I do believe though that they would have had to build a building.
Yes.
South of town.
Yes.
In order for them to even have their.
Yes. Both applicants were, were in the southern city limits. Very good, yeah, very good. Are there any other public comments? Yes? Oh, I'm sorry, I, you were next. Okay, don't, yeah, don't let me forget. Okay, all right, yes, ma'am. Good evening.
But I have three kids.
Start, start, I'm sorry, could you state your name again?
My name is Ivan Aquino.
Okay, thank you.
The new manager for the farming here, uh. In the corner, I don't remember the address. But my point is, I moved here two months ago. And I disappoint with where they are because. You need thinking in the children. Don't think in the money. I don't know if, I grew up when, always, and my mom never used weed. I know used weed. And children, they don't need weed. Don't think in the money, think in the kids. It's only one thing.
Uh, we're, I'm sorry, ma'am, but, I'm sorry, my, my ears don't work as well as they used to. Um, you're opposed, you're opposed?
I know.
Opposed to modifying?
I said, no, it's right. Thinking in the kids, don't think in the money.
No, thank you, I just clarified. Thank you. That was for my benefit, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. You're, you're next. Good evening.
Why, this would be a business that we would want to bring closer. Obviously, they can come. They can be a thousand feet out. I don't know why we need to invite them closer. Um, and I don't understand. Why that would be our vision, why that would be what, what, what we want to bring. If adults want to use it. If adults want to use it, that's fine, that's their right, but I don't understand inviting them to our downtown area or displacing them closer to our schools, especially our schools. And I would just invite each of you to maybe stop by the high school and talk to the vice principal and ask him to open up his bottom door and show you all the drug paraphernalia that they've actually confiscated, which doesn't account for all the pieces that the kids keep on them every day. Because, Janay, I'm sorry, but she's right, I worked in a school for a long, long time before that I was on the school board. I mean, they have everything that you can buy in the stores, and they get it from other places too, and they have buyers. But why do we want to encourage that? And I would just really encourage, I know we need the money, but I would just really encourage us to look for more positive businesses, because do we really want Willows to be, you know, downtown Willows? That's what we have, taco trucks and places to buy weed. Thank you.
Sherry, would you mind stating your name for the record? We know who you are.
Sherry Brock, sorry.
We know who you are. Sherry, thank you, thank you for your comments. Any other public comment this evening, anyone? Shirley, good to see you. Good evening.
I'm a long, I was an employee of the City of Willows for over 30 years, and I was a member of the Planning Commission. I was a member of the Planning Commission in 2017 when we enacted the distance requirements. We got over 250 signatures within a matter of less than three or four days. We went to all of the businesses, and without exception, all of them were not in favor of having marijuana in our city. There was one business owner, I won't mention the name, that he didn't want his name to show up on a petition. But overall, the business owners were not in favor of having marijuana dispensaries. So that's why we enacted the thousand-foot limits from all these different areas. I didn't have much time to do research on this because I just found out about it literally a couple of days ago. But I did do a little bit of resource, research on it. And this is from the Department of Cannabis Control. Where cannabis businesses are allowed, cannabis use is legal in California, but cities and counties can prohibit cannabis businesses like retail. As a result, the state is a patchwork of areas where it is and is not legal to establish a cannabis business. So here's my, here's the figures here. Forty-four percent of cities and counties allow at least one type of cannabis business. That's 239 out of 539. Fifty-six percent of cities and counties do not allow any type of cannabis business. That's 300 out of 539. Sixty percent of cities and counties do not allow any retail cannabis business. That's 324 out of 539. And here is the map, so all of the areas in red are the areas where they do not allow any cannabis. The areas in green is where they do allow it. Now, you referenced, you modeled your proposal after the City of Chico and the City of Red Bluff. The City of Chico is not the City of Willows, I'm sorry. We're 6,400 people here. Chico is huge, they have rampant homelessness, they have crime over there. They have three or four different dispensaries. I don't know what Red Bluff has, I haven't had time to check into that. But I'd like to suggest that we look at the City of Orland, which is our closest city. They don't allow any cannabis in the City of Orland. Retail storefronts are prohibited, retail delivery are prohibited, distribution is prohibited, testing is prohibited, manufacturing is prohibited, and cultivation is prohibited. The County of Glen does not allow any any retail storefronts, they're prohibited, retail delivery prohibited, distribution prohibited, testing prohibited, manufacturing prohibited, and cultivation prohibited. I agree with the other people that spoke here, that we have to think of our children, and I, this is very painful for me to talk about, but I'm going to talk about it. There's probably not one person in this room that hasn't been affected by drug abuse and alcohol abuse in your own family. My family has been affected in horrible ways. I lost my brother 16 years ago as a result of him being shot to death by my other brother. It was an accident, they were up on a hunting trip, there were no cell phones in those days, they were on motorcycles, they were very high in the mountains, they had been drinking, and my brother Ron had been smoking marijuana. This brother was the brother that, as a teenager, he planted marijuana plants in my father's greenhouse. My dad didn't even know what marijuana was until he finally figured it out. You know, his son was growing pot in the backyard. My nephews, one of my nephews was involved in the largest drug bust in Sonoma County a few years back. He started smoking marijuana as a youngster, following in the footsteps of his father, who smoked marijuana and drank alcohol. This nephew, the bust where the money was hidden in this house that caught on fire was worth over $2 million. This was illegal money obtained from illegal marijuana production. I my brother Ron is the one that made the phone call to all of the family members and told us what happened that fateful night when it was over 10 o'clock at night. He stayed up, he was in the mountains on a motorcycle, no way to come down to even use the payphone at the bottom of the hill to notify anyone that my other brother Ed had died, he was dead. My brother put him in a sleeping bag, he zipped it up to keep the ants from crawling on him that night. My family has had to live with this for over 16 years. Holidays every single year where we can never talk about my brother Ed. It's like he never lived, you know, we cannot talk about him because my brother Ron is still alive. You know, and he deals, he still medicates himself, he still grows marijuana, which is legal in the town I grew up in. Legal to grow it in your backyard, he's got the most beautiful marijuana garden I've ever seen. I mean, he's an awesome gardener. Is he a drug addict and not productive? No, not by any means. But he medicates himself to this day with marijuana and alcohol to deaden the pain. And it gets worse around June 29th, which is the day that the accident happened. I don't want to see any other family in this town, you know, that perhaps their parent or their older brother would buy marijuana from a dispensary that we had in this town, you know, and they'd go smoke it, or they'd have a drink or two and possibly have an accident and kill someone. You know, none of us know when that kind of thing, you know, is going to happen. And our children, they're on the road every day, they're going in and out of this town. They'd be driving by a dispensary, and if someone pointed out, it just becomes something normal that they're going to see. And it shouldn't be normal. You know, drug and alcohol use and abuse, regardless if it's legal, should not be something that's considered a normal part of a healthy family. I want to encourage you to think about this, and perhaps even brainstorm with the City of Orland, who has managed to not bring any marijuana businesses into their city, and they are thriving. They have businesses that are starting up in Orland right and left. I don't see anything wrong with, you know, with brainstorming, with officials from another city to get ideas of why, why are businesses coming into your city? Why is your, why do businesses want to come into your city? What are you doing that's, you know, causing businesses to grow in your city? So I just, I want to encourage you to think about the children, and think about the image that we want to portray in our city. And think about other creative ways to raise revenue. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Shirley, and thank you for your extraordinary service to City Willows over many years. Any other public comments tonight in reference to this matter? Any other public comments? No other public comments? Okay, thank you. Council member discussion, would like to begin.
Mr. Chairman, I think full disclosure on my part is necessary here. You'll recall this was originally scheduled for the meeting last.
Yes.
And I anticipated walking into a chamber of standing room only. And I was very disappointed that we didn't have people here on a pro and a con on this particular position. So if staff is looking for a culprit, if they are, of who might have informed some of these people, me a cop. That's not brag on my part. That is a black mark on the city council and city staff of not broadcasting this particular item enough that other people would even know about it. This slipped under the rug. A few people, I circulated probably 25 or 30 of just the two pages of this agenda and informing people of what it was. Maybe out of the 25, 30 people that I talked to, only two of them said they're going to do whatever they want to do anyway, there's no point in not showing up, this city council, blah, blah, blah. The point of that is, is, as somebody pointed out here, is we need to listen to our constituency. We represent our constituency. We might have particular personal feelings, pro or con on this particular thing. I only heard one person, I believe, in support of this. We've heard several people, and I'm assuming most of these people here tonight are opposed to any of the modifications we did. You were commended, Mr. Mayor, for your efforts 2017 in adopting some of the restrictions, and I suggest that all of those restrictions remain in place. I'm not ready to make a motion yet because everybody should have the opportunity to comment, but I certainly would like to be the one that makes the motion to reject these changes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, you're welcome, Mr. Sprague, thank you for your comments. Mr. Vice Mayor Hudson, would you like to speak?
Yeah. Couple things, it was directed that I was speaking strictly of revenue. I am a father of three, I understand what it is to keep drugs and alcohol out of my kids' reach. With that being said, when you discuss somebody that has a habitual problem that is struggling, it is usually not with a substance such as marijuana. It is cocaine, it is meth, it is alcohol. Yet, we have three bars, and technically four if you count Casa Ramos. We have five establishments that serve alcohol. How many liquor stores do we have? The kids that are at your schools have the vape pens that are bought inside those same liquor stores. So legal or illegal, the kids get access. At least if it's a legal means, it's managed. I would rather, if I were to catch one of my kids, which they would never hear the end of it, doing a substance like this, I would much rather know they got it from a business rather than some guy sitting on the corner where it is possibly laced with something else. Right? Now, the kids getting access to these drugs, that's on the parents, that's on me. If my kids are drinking a beer that I have in the fridge, which is well within their reach, right? And I lived 200 feet from the school, if I had beer in my fridge, right? They could access it. So you're saying that they're allowed to have access to alcohol, but not a substance such as marijuana? And I respect everyone's opinion, and that's what I love about my job, and that's what I love about the people that are here, is we all have different opinions. So I do appreciate that, I do think of the kids. I took this position because I want to make a better Willows for my kids. And I spoke my piece on this particular matter, because I do know people that use marijuana. I personally do not use it. I know people that do use it for PTSD, for back pain, successful people. Not, not people that are in jail or anything like that, no, they're lawyers, they're business owners. You know, they're veterans that use this for other reasons other than, and they go to facilities like this to buy it because they know it's pure, they know it's clean, they don't have to worry about what's in it. But I do respect your guys' opinion, and as was stated, this is not my decision. I listen to the constituents. As I have talked to people that are pro to it, there's obviously plenty of people here that are con to it. So I do thank everyone for coming. And yeah, that's kind of all I really have on that matter, so.
Thank you.
You want to do Rick first?
Rick would like to go first, Mr. Thomas.
You want to be first, Mr. Thomas?
Doesn't matter to me. Mr. Vodden is referring to you.
But I have something to say.
I, you know, it boils down to freedoms of America. And I look back at the history of prohibition, when the alcohol, and alcohol comes about. Was that a good decision, not a bad decision? That was what, over 100 years ago? I think we're talking about the same situation with it. I'm not a user, never have been. I don't technically subscribe to, just because there's a store there that the children are going to have access to it from the store. I think black market buyers are going to be a lot of black market buyers, no matter how you slice it. One of my thoughts is, I'd rather be able to, for those who do use, want to smoke it, if that's what they're after, not just CBD or other items like that. But they can find a spot that doesn't have fentanyl in it, you know, that's a big concern. Thing that probably resonated the most is, decisions should not be about revenue. And the decision should not, and the one that struck probably the most chord was that it normalizes the use of cannabis. I think we're beyond that, but I also cheer what you're saying about normalizing the use of cannabis. I look at the map of where, what it is, it's a thousand feet from schools, churches, parks, and the way to think, which basically eliminates all of the city except for two spots. Along the canal, that is all residential on the southeast side, and a small, small portion right out on Ipan. Is that where we want it? When people coming into town? Probably not. The other opportunity is further south, towards Basin Street, behind Rumiano, or even further south, down at the gas station. No buildings, no likelihood of it coming. I can understand the issues. There's no doubt that, and I agree with the scourge of illegal drugs and what they can do and what the abuse of alcohol can do. As governmental entity, I'm not sure that we should make our decisions based on the personal choices of people that get involved in that. We can certainly do whatever we can to help those who make those decisions. I think this is more about cannabis use and not just smoking of the weed. And I don't believe a child, if it's a thousand feet away or two thousand feet away, they're going to know where this place is if they want to get into it. I do know, having visited one, having admitted earlier, it seems to me that likelihood of under twenty-one-year-old accessing through a cannabis dispensary and the risk to that industry, that business owner's right that he would not allow that, doesn't mean that there isn't somebody standing outside willing to do that for them. There was a guard actually parked in the parking lot watching for that particular action and the one in Chico that I visited. So I think there's substantial reason for it. Maybe there's an opportunity to, say, keep a thousand feet from schools. We have a ton of churches out there. I'm not sure all of them are even within the right zoning for where they are. I know there's two of them on Sycamore Street in the two hundred block. So that takes out everything downtown. So I think there might be a way to take a look at this and tweak it some, open the door. I think freedom of commercial opportunity and the freedom to act as a business is a founding right of us as Americans. It's been approved by the state of California. That's not for me to say if it's right or wrong. I'm still making decisions on this subject, so I'll defer now to, with a right to recall if necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. So this is hard for me too, because I appreciated you sharing your personal tragedy, I will call it, with your life. And the, you refer to marijuana, but you also referred to alcohol. I'm one of seven children who lived in the horror of alcohol. The abuse, the violence, the humiliation, the embarrassment. If it was up to me, alcohol would be illegal. Alcohol would not be sold. Alcohol would not be present, but I would not sell that issue. I could not sell the issue because the majority of our constituents consume alcohol, consume it, you know, regularly and frequently and with the freedom to do so. So the fact that I think alcohol is a horrific, miserable chemical does not make, give me the right to tell you or anybody in this room or in this community or in this world that they cannot have access to it. I am sorry that I had that horrific experience of alcohol as a child, and I'm sorry for my siblings, but doesn't give us the right to say no. I'm sure that while you say you all represent the constituents of the city of Willows, you do not because the sale and consumption of alcohol, whether I like it or not, is, is excessive or not excessive. It is significant, it is free, it is a right, and it is done. And I feel the same way about this, right or wrong, whether I hate it or not. Alcohol will be sold. Alcohol is sold. Cannabis is legal. Cannabis will be sold. And whether we want to make moral judgments and statements about its right to do so, I think is inappropriate. I'd love to, but I cannot. And I, and again, I've been a T, a prohibitionist. I, I stayed away from the stuff. I suffered social separation because I wouldn't participate, but it was me, not me, not the world, not the people around me because they had other views. People have other views on this subject. We have a right as citizen, as elected officials, to represent the whole of the city of Willows, not the members of the community who have a strong view, which you're entitled to, and Evan said it very clearly and very correctly. I appreciate and respect your view, but I do not believe for a minute that it represents the whole of the constituency of the city of Willows. For that matter, it wouldn't be legal if it did because it wouldn't have gotten passed at other levels and by other jurisdictions. So while I have this feeling, this strong emotional feeling about alcohol, I don't see any difference between this and cannabis. And apparently a lot of other people don't either, or it wouldn't be legal. Oh, and by the way, I understand the black market in cannabis marijuana sales is hurting, suffering, and good for them. I'm glad they're suffering. I hope they all go out of business. And I hope people buy marijuana at stores where they're regulated according to that forty-eight-page document I read and where it's monitored and controlled. Because as we've said more than once in this evening, they're going to get it if they want it. And why, why we pretend that we should have the right to say they can't and all that is, I find, inappropriate. So I apologize for my emotional appeal. It was horrific for me, my siblings, and it was alcohol, not marijuana. And I'm sorry. You know, if it was up to me, nobody here would drink any alcohol, and I don't think that would fly.
Thank you.
Thank you, David, and no, no, thank you, but no fall to him necessarily. Thank you very much for your comment. You know, I appreciate the viewpoints of all of my colleagues in the city council. I also want to thank and appreciate all of the viewpoints that have been spoken tonight so eloquently from our, from our citizens, and thank you for attending. As I said earlier, I was, I was a member of the city council along with Mr. Fletcher when we discussed this, the current ordinance at, at great length, at great length. Much deliberation, a lot of thought, a lot of time, a lot of work went into the current, current lengthy ordinance, David. It is, it is a very lengthy ordinance, but it's a very comprehensive ordinance. And this, the comments tonight just affirms my position. I, I, I'm not, I'm only one member of the city council, one of five, right? We're all city council members here. We're all representing in our hearts and our heads and our minds and from our constituents the best business practices for the city of Willows and, and you are, you are most in our hearts and our heads based on facts to make the right decision, hopefully on behalf of the citizens of the city. I, I spent, I'm a farmer and a law enforcement officer right in my life. I spent thirty-six years active, full-time law enforcement, farming all the while. But I started locally. I spent the first seventeen years here in Glen County, working law enforcement agencies, as well as police department and Glen County Sheriff's Office. I worked patrol, investigations, training and supervision here locally. I went under a state agency and, and all the while combating drugs, drugs and alcohol and mental illness and all combinations of, of the three. Full service, full scope law enforcement background. And, and Joe, I appreciate your comments and what you've seen in, in your history with drug abuse. God knows I've seen it, I've experienced it, okay? And that's not the issue tonight. That's not the issue tonight. But I'm sharing my background with you because after I went to state agency for the last twenty years of my full-time career, I'm still in it part-time, and it's forty-six years and counting. But I still worked very heavily with the narcotics, and it was prescription narcotics primarily, and, and marijuana, right? I've done everything you can imagine with the drug enforcement from a law enforcement perspective, including illicit marijuana operations, God knows, too many to count, too many search warrants, too many cases I put together all over the state of California, illicit operations in our national forests, including many in the Mendocino National Forest. And in the end, my, my decision to, to support our comprehensive ordinance was based on, hopefully, if, if it, if, if we can legalize it from a common sense perspective locally, maybe it will get illicit operations, illicit dangerous operations out of our national forests. The thing that did that was the, the August complex fire, okay? It wasn't anything else. That's what got the illicit marijuana operations out of our court. Those aren't the, those aren't the, the issues here. We, we all have our opinions. Obviously, there, there is lawful marijuana use in the state of California, and our ordinance supports that. Your comments tonight just, just affirms my position. I'm not wavering in my thoughts on, on eliminating licensed daycare centers, as I said earlier in my, in my comments, or preschool or schools for that matter, from the thousand-foot perspective. I'm going to stick with the current ordinance as presented. I'm going to support that. I was an integral part of putting that together along with Joe and my other colleagues, three of our other colleagues. And I think we have a very comprehensive, excellent ordinance in place. I'm pro-business, obviously pro-business, but not every business is a good fit for a community. Communities vary, communities are different. We have our own community, as we all know. I'm going to stand for my position supporting the thousand-foot limitation from all of the prospective entities listed in our coordinate, current ordinance. And that's just based on my life experience and what I've seen. Marijuana is still a Schedule One drug in the United States of America. It's lawful, it has lawful use in the state of California, but I will stick with, in my heart and my head, and based on my lifetime experience, I'm going to stick with our current ordinance as, as written and not waver off that, off that tier. But I do appreciate my colleagues' perspectives and everybody else's perspectives on this matter. So with that, any other council comments in reference to this matter tonight?
Mr. Mayor, if there are no further comments, I would make the motion that we absolutely reject this whole concept of eliminating the distance requirements between dispensaries, businesses, churches, and that we remain steadfast in the current ordinance, the way it's written.
Mr. Sprague has moved to retain the current, current ordinance as written. Mr. Sprague, is that clear enough for your motion?
Yes.
Yes, and reject any further amendments to that order?
Reject any further amendments to it?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Sprague. Mr. Who, uh, Mr. Hoover, is that clear?
No.
Okay, very good. Is there a second? Is there a second? I second the motion. Further discussion? No further discussion? Mr. Hoover, this would be a roll call vote. All those in favor signify, or I'm sorry, roll call vote, Mr. Hoover, go ahead. I've got it ahead of you, sorry. This is the third meeting of the day, go ahead.
Councilmember Thomas.
No.
Councilmember Sprague.
Yes.
Councilmember Vodden.
No.
Vice Mayor Hudson.
No.
Mayor Hanson.
Hi. Motion fails three to two.
Mr. Before we close on this particular item, may I point out here?
Well, we're not closing yet.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
This item, okay, I've got a comment on this item.
Mr. Mayor, I, I, I think it's appropriate to make a motion to approve the resolution as it was presented with the five-hundred-foot distance in lieu of the one-thousand.
That would be next, often that city council. So, Mr. Vodden, your motion is to approve, go ahead again, please.
To approve the motion item six C to change the resolution to a five-hundred-foot distance.
Mr. Vodden, your motion is to approve item six C as presented.
Correct.
Correct. Mr. Vodden has moved to approve item six C as presented. That would be reducing the distance requirements to five hundred feet between retail dispensary cannabis businesses and preschool through grade twelve schools and consider allowing retail dispensary cannabis business in additional zoning. Is there a second? Is there a second to Mr. Vodden's motion?
May I amend Mr. Vodden's motion?
Go ahead, Mr. Hudson.
I would just like to amend it to still keep it at a thousand feet from the schools. I think that that provides a good buffer from his walking to him from school.
Mr. Vodden, Mr. Hudson.
Does, does that still effectively prevent it from occurring? You know?
No. No.
If it's not.
Are you, are you saying all schools, including preschools and all other schools, public and private?
As it's currently stated.
Would be preschool and K through twelve.
K through twelve.
Preschool and K through twelve.
Does your amendment leave licensed acres in?
No.
Okay, just schools, preschool through, through both grades?
Correct, the same as, as it's written, just to a thousand feet instead of five hundred.
Accepted.
Mr. Vodden, you accepted the amendment?
Yes.
That was your amended motion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hoover, is that amended motion clear?
Yes.
Is it clear?
Yeah.
Yes, can you further, counselor, is it clear?
That's clear.
We'd like to offer a friendly amendment.
Mr. Thomas, yes.
To item one and two, add number three that the city of Willows Planning Commission is hereby directed to review and possibly amend in accordance with the terms of this resolution. In WIC zones of the city of Willows, retail dispensary cannabis licensed businesses may operate as a permitted use.
Mr. Vodden, accept that amendment?
How is that an amendment?
That's adding.
Oh, you wrote that, okay.
Well, I copied it from the prior resolution.
So we are saying this plus schools?
Just schools, but also inviting the, the planning commission to consider where those, what
Which I think we.
Commercial zones that would allow cannabis.
Very good. I think, okay, I'll accept that because it was in there anyway. The planning commission has the ability to determine these things. They make those judgments, that's their job.
And thank you, you accept that amendment?
Yes, sir.
Vodden, counselor? Thoughts?
I don't think I have any thoughts, but I would just make sure that it's clear with the court.
Direction to go back to the planning commission to reconsider zones that the cannabis dispens.
Yeah, redirected that planning commission review and, and possibly amend it in accordance with the terms of this resolution.
Okay, yeah, on the same, the same that was on the previous, yep. We'll take it to the planning commission to see about zoning and if they want to add or take what.
Original resolution.
Yep.
Just again engaging the planning commission.
Yep, and then we'll bring that back to you with their.
Mr. Vodden, you've accepted those additional amendments? Mr. Hudson, you had the second. Do you accept those?
I have a, I just have a question. Does that allow the planning commission to either add zones or remove all zones, effectively removing the entire city limits from that?
I think that would have to come back to the council. The planning commission would make a recommendation, I believe, and it would come back for final approval.
Okay, right.
Because you know, one, one of the things to note is that there's several zones right now that it's not permitted in. So if the planning commission says, we just like it as is with your amendment, it'll just sort of pretty much be back.
Yeah, and.
We're getting an additional body to locate everything, essentially is what we're saying by doing.
The zoning, you know, the planning commission will reconsider it, and whatever their recommendation is, it will come back to the council for consideration and approval. I'm just saying if there's no recommendations to make any additions, we'll pretty much be with what we already have. Can we just do that?
You accept this second?
I accept them.
Very good. Mr. Hoover, is the motion clear as amended and as amended?
Clear as mud.
And as amended.
Yeah, I got it.
Is it clear?
Yeah, we're good.
Very good. Anything further, gentlemen? Need further discussion, Mr. Sprague?
Just a closing comment when we, before we move on to the next.
Calling for discussion now, Mr. Sprague, on this matter for the vote.
Yes, go ahead, call for the vote.
Do you have, do you have any further comments to make?
Well, I, I do, I would.
Now's the time for discussion.
Mayor, I don't know if it's appropriate to have it after the vote, though, so if.
We're not, no, we're having discussion. We're having discussion now during.
Okay.
This is discussion, counselor. We're not having an after-the-vote discussion. This is, this is discussion, Mr. Sprague.
My point, point on this is that, as I pointed out, when this was on the agenda last time, nobody showed up. I would suggest that most of these people here tonight are either because of my direct communication with them or word of mouth with others. The point of that is, I don't know how we do it. I know that we advertise, we have our agenda on this website, we do this, that, and the other thing to notify the public. But obviously, there's a great deal of apathy out there on certain items. So I don't know how we do it, but I would ask staff to take a look at this and be cognizant that these types of things that you have to know in your heart are going to be very sensitive to a lot of people and how we take that extra step in the future for this type of a thing to come to the awareness of the public. I don't, I don't have a suggestion for that, but I just, it, it saddens me that I, as a single councilman, had to make other people aware of this type of a situation. Something's wrong with a democracy of a city council and city government that has to cause somebody else to be able to bring somebody's attention. Something's wrong within our system. I don't know what it is, I don't know how to correct it, but I would just admonish staff to be a little bit more cognizant in the future on these types of things that become. I'm sorry, Ms. Brown, am I bothering you?
You would admonish staff?
I would ask staff, let me rephrase that.
Thank you.
I would ask staff to be cognizant of the fact that when something like this sensitive comes to the attention of staff and you bring it to us, that somehow or another, good folks in the world have a better awareness of that type of activity. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome, Mr. Sprague, thank you.
So if I may, Mister Mayor, I would like to suggest that any suggestion that the City of Willows or the staff of the City of Willows is unique. In the area of apathy towards the execution of government and the management of governmental entities like cities, counties, and states is silly. Because it's uniquely, it's uniform throughout the country, that people act when they have an interest. Or they act when they're called upon, as you did in this case, but for the most part, the citizens of our democracy are not engaged. And we can speak to the bad and the good or whatever of that, but to suggest that it's unique to our community lacks merit.
Thank you. Thank you, Mister Vodden. Uh, I stand firm on the current ordinance. I am, I will be voting. In the uh with a nay on this matter in a few seconds when it goes to vote. Just I. Made my uh made my case, I've made my statements, my statements, I won't expand any further, but I am I'm opposed to any changes. With the current current ordinance and I would implore my my colleagues who are considering a vote momentarily, uh. Just to think about that for the vote. With that, any further comments from the council before we call for the roll call vote? No further comments? Mister Hoover, this. No, from the council.
Oh, from the council.
Mister Hoover, this will be a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Thomas.
Yes.
Counselor Sprague.
No.
Counselor Vodden.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hudson.
Yes.
Mayor Hanson.
Nay. Vote is three to two in favor of of the motion. Motion passes. Three to two vote. The time is eight eleven P M. Let's take a ten minute recess at this time, please. Thank you.
You missed the light. Council members, are you ready to uh continue? Well, good evening again, everyone. It is eight twenty seven P M. It's still Tuesday, May twenty eight, May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. We're uh reconvening in open session from a short recess. Uh, council members, item six D, the I five feasibility study will be uh continued at the next meeting, if that's acceptable to my colleagues.
Acceptable.
Very good.
Item six D will be continued.
The I five feasibility study, I five, item six D, if the council, if we have consensus from the council.
Yeah, yeah.
With that. Is there a reason why we're extending it? Just out of curiosity? Time?
It it.
It's a function of time, okay?
Basically, yes.
It's a good.
Yes.
You also have a closed session after.
We do have a closed session after, and we we still have a one more uh uh action item as well. So moving uh to item six A, council member complaint. Discuss complaint filed by council member Sprague against the city manager and the city's contract building inspector, city manager Marty Brown.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, the um complaint from council member Sprague, I'm going to have our building inspector speak. To it mostly because he and the fire chief have worked on it uh so much, but I did just want to make a general statement that. The code enforcement violations and citations at six hundred um North Humboldt Street have been going on for a quite a long time, a lot longer than. Um, is cited in council member Sprague's um complaint. And so. Because of that, it seemed relevant to have our contract building inspector Wyatt Paxton here to walk the council through. Um, what we've been working on for well over a year, I think, at this point. And give you a picture of of what those code violations and citations have looked like and the extent. Of those violations and the progress that's also been made on the repairs. Would that Wyatt, if you'd stick over?
Thank you, uh, Ms. Brown. Uh, hello, Wyatt Paxton. Good to see you, our Wyatt Paxton, our building official, Wyatt.
Thank you. Let me give you a little history of uh six hundred Humboldt. Um, on uh March twenty fourth, uh, the fire chief invited me to come with him uh. Uh, to do a fire safety inspection because uh there was notification of.
What year was that?
What's that?
Which year? March twenty?
Three. Did I say twenty four?
You just said March twenty four, you didn't say a year.
Twenty twenty three.
Well, then, two months ago, it's.
No, it's over fourteen months ago. Sorry about that. Um, and uh there were several abandoned vehicles uh in the parking lot, uh damaged carports, garbage. Uh, strung from place to place. There were needles outside uh the apartments. Um. Missing ad posted addresses. There were apartments not numbered. There were missing fire extinguishers. So Nate thought it would be good for uh to have the building inspector to go along with him so we could pick up all the building violations at that time. Okay, uh, I work with management. Uh, we made a a clear list. We on uh three twenty four, we inspected the outside of all the buildings and we gave them a comprehensive list. Um, she asked me to let her have time to correct those items and they correct them very quickly. Uh, we again started doing inspections on July twentieth. Um, I have thirty four pages of corrections in the last fourteen months that we've provided to that uh facility. She's pulled twenty, over twenty one permits and has paid over forty two hundred dollars worth of uh permit fees. And also paid thousands of dollars of violation fees for reinspection for the fire fire violations. They've been complying as quickly as they can. Um. Uh, we did over forty site visits, over a hundred and twenty five inspections. Every apartment has been looked at. This apartment that the complaint's about is one oh nine. I personally went there three times. He was there, he wouldn't open the door. Uh, the neighbors had said that. When I finally did get an inspector where he could go in and look at it, he got very aggressive. With the that inspector, I never allowed inspector to go by himself again. He was yelling and pushing, pushing him back out of the apartment. This, this, the state law says if the tenant does not want us to inspect it, we have to get a warrant to go inside. So they voluntarily have to let us go inside. So I can't inspect the building if they they say they don't want us to be look inside their apartment. They have that right. So uh, that being said, um, let me give you a history of what happened before I started doing this. From twenty ten to twenty twenty two, you had seven permits pulled on that place. One was when they got caught doing something without permits. None of those were ever closed. Okay? So in this amount of time, within the management that we've been working with, they've done hundreds of thousands of dollars improvements to balconies. That were cracked and uh broken, dry rot, posting addresses, many safety violations have already been taken care of. They're in the course of getting next year's inspection started all over again to to look at these apartments. So uh, council member Sprague uh stated in here uh a health and safety code of seventeen ninety two zero point three. He states in there about all these being inadequate, but the last, the last paragraph says, however, these conditions. Would not displace anybody on their own merit alone unless the building was built. Illegally, converted illegally, or construction was done illegally. So on those merits, we cannot vacate them out of that process. I will let you know that management offered that man to move him to a new apartment twice and he refused. So we did all we were that we could possibly do. I I, you know, count fourteen months. We're talking about sixty weeks. We were there almost every week doing an inspection. So I'm not sure what else that we could have done. I'll take any questions you have.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mister Paxton for your uh your report. Uh, Mister Sprague, uh, you brought this uh uh complaint forward. We'll begin with you.
Sure. Uh, appreciate that, and by no means was my. Yeah, complaint on this particular item to meant to diminish what you've already done out there, Wyatt. You've done a great deal. The problem was that this, this particular problem with this roof leak was on no less than. Six, maybe as many as seven of those buildings, and it caused a slip and fall on those hard surface. Floors where the water was coming down from the roof leak upstairs. And coming down onto the concrete foundation and then migrating horizontally and making a slip and fall condition on those properties. As you pointed out in your your first um. I think it was dated March one that you're talking about in in um twenty twenty three, yes, March first of twenty twenty three. You specifically pointed out that faulty weather protection. Which goes on to say here, buildings or proportions thereof shall be considered substandard when they have faulty weather prediction, protection. Which shall include deteriorated and ineffective waterproofing of roofs. That was in your report. I parroted what you did. I added on to it, but the point is you identified the problem right there in the first place. More than a year ago, and the problem never got cured. It was never identified by you beyond this. Even though you were aware, the city manager was aware, I was aware, the then uh onsite managers were aware of the roof leaks that were in fact causing a hazardous condition. Especially for the elderly folks that lived in that portion or lived in those in those buildings. So again. I wasn't trying to diminish the efforts that you and your staff and the fire chief had already gone through. My problem was that this problem, this ident. This particular problem was being ignored. Um, I would also point out.
Can I make a statement to that?
Yes.
Didn't you say we were derelict in our duty? You stated we were derelict in our duty. Now, on three twenty four, they pulled re-roof permits. This leak eventually was not a roof leak. It would be impossible to have a roof leak come through apartment number two on top of him. And go to number one. It never went through number two. This came through the wall. I found it. I found it in March of twenty twenty four, when I went out there in heavy rain. The 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 downspout on the gutter was plugged. It was pushing water against the wall. And where the two seams of the wall came together, there wasn't the proper flashing when the structure was built. And it was sucking into the wall into his apartment. It was not in a walkway. It was not in. The walkways I was talking about were exterior where there was flooding on sidewalks. That's what I was talking about. This is was interior. I never did, staff never did get to see the water inside. It was always gone when we were inside.
Right.
So, but you you didn't, you said we were being derelict in our duty by not uh following up. We did everything possible. It's not the responsibility of the building department to assess where the problem's coming from. That's for professionals to do. And the owner's responsible to do that. And we re-inspected it weekly when we were allowed to go into the apartment. So I'm not sure how you can say that saying we're derelict in our duty is not diminishing what we were trying to provide.
Well, again, I stand pat because we showed, I showed you pictures, you had pictures, we had the continued problem. This, there's a fallacy in understanding how that building is built. I had to deal with some of these in Sacramento back in the eighties. And this, what we refer to as a basin, flat back roof, okay, where you have a. And I showed you pictures, you saw it, and you've seen the Google maps. You can see that. You're talking about, and this is the fallacy that people are making a mistake, is that that because that water didn't hit the second floor, means it didn't come from the roof. That's not true. The way those buildings are built, they they abut each other where you have the first floor and the second floor. But that second floor does not continue over both of those, over the below units. There is a dead airspace intentionally. That plywood does not carry across, the joists do not carry across from one unit to the other, because if I jump on this side. The sound transfers over here. In addition to that, the plumbing goes up through those walls. That's why if you look, those bathrooms and those kitchens are on those. On the inside walls so that that plumbing can go up. So when you had a roof leak in the scupper above, which you know what I'm talking about, scupper above. It went right down to the concrete and then migrated horizontal. There's where the problem was. That's what I explained to you. I explained it to your your nephew or your grandson, I can't remember. And I explained it to Ms. Brown, got totally ignored. I was not trying to intervene into a policy. I was trying to satisfy. A particular problem that I had history with, that I knew where the solution was. And there's where I was being ignored. And there's where, from my perspective, you identified the problem March first of twenty twenty three, and it continued through the winter. Continued through the winter. We've got a new manager out there. I explained to that new manager on a Monday, and she had somebody out that fixed it on a Wednesday in a winter rain. The water did not get on the floors downstairs.
I would disagree. Um, I've been there when the building's been remodeled. You're speaking to a party wall. Those buildings were built way before party walls or sound walls were made. There are not duplicate walls in that structure. There are single walls, just like a residential house, but your week of when it got solved was the same time that I visited the place and when it raining. But you know what? The problem got solved. It wasn't because, and it's up to the professionals to find that out. We're not, as building inspectors, we're not required or allowed to diagnose the problem for them. It's their responsibility. So you you could have made your comment to the owner, it would have been way better than making it to us. Okay, so um. I I don't know what else we could do. We're still doing it currently. Uh, she's been great to work with. Um, she, now she understands the process. We streamline it for them. We issue permits as quickly as we can for them.
Yeah, I guess we're just going to have to agree to disagree as professionals, aren't we? So I stand pat on my problem here and my frustration that being ignored and the issue was brought to staff's attention. The laws that I cited are very clear that put the responsibility of getting the repairs to insist that those repairs were made. And the laws are very clear in the event that there was a slip and fall accident situation out there and the city was aware of it. And the city did not take adequate ac- action to be able to to alleviate the problem. Staff put the city at risk for lawsuits.
We did not. We issued thirty four pages of corrections. We visited forty times.
And I'm not.
And that's all we can do is give them notice of that. The next step was violations. They had already paid those also. They were trying to find a problem as quickly as possible, so.
And again, I'm not diminishing what you've done out there. What I'm criticizing is what you did. Thank you.
Anything further, Mister Sprague?
No.
Counselor Thomas.
Well, uh, in writing your complaint, what is your desired solution?
Pardon me?
Yeah, what is your desired solution with writing this complaint?
What is my solution?
What is your desired outcome from writing this complaint?
Well, I I am, my frustration is I pointed.
Not your frustration, what is your desired outcome?
What do you want to happen? What do you want us to do?
This is an action item. What's the action?
It's an action item for the council to take.
Well, I'm asking what your, what your solution would be.
My solution to this is for staff to enforce the laws that are written in regard to the deficiency, this particular deficiency that is exists at this, at the uh, at the complex. I'm not trying to make the complex more difficult for them or make this is not an issue for the complex that you. That I'm I'm not picking on them. I'm picking on the fact that we had a dangerous situation out there that staff ignored. That's my issue. How we resolve that, it's a member, it's a five member board here. I didn't bring this public. You, your mayor or your your city manager brought it public.
Mister Sprague, you brought, you brought the complaint to me and my fellow council members.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, so so you have no ownership of this? Well, I I'm sorry.
No, I I have, well, I have absolute ownership.
This is your complaint?
Yes.
Right.
So your solution is that we are to direct staff to follow the law?
Yes, that would be my solution. That would be my recommendation. If you're looking for a solution. For me, yes. I brought this to the council for a joint discussion on how to deal with it. Quite frankly, I thought we would probably be agendized in closed session. I did not anticipate.
Well, since it, the city council under the protocol manual has two employees, the city manager and city attorney.
Yes.
And you've known about this problem for over a year. You've been addressing it for over a year. And on February. Our February council meeting, we established the provision to do a performance evaluation for the city manager.
Correct.
This would be the performance evaluation issue for the city manager. You elected not to participate in that process of performance evaluation. All the way up to to April thirteenth, I think, our meeting, we actually did the formal final presentation. Why would this not been have brought forward as a performance evaluation issue by you at that? Why would this not been have brought forward as a performance evaluation issue by you at that time? And why wouldn't you have participated in the performance evaluation?
You know, you're probably right. I probably should have, and I should have included the other three or four complaints that I'm about ready to issue on the city manager. So what do you prefer?
Well, I would assume you would have addressed these issues that you have and when we, when we were doing the performance evaluation.
And the performance evaluation didn't allow for this type of thing. We had a boilerplate, fill in the blank, one through five, how did I do?
With plenty of opportunity for specific scripts as to what other issues were, they could have been brought forward. Okay, can I, you, you also raised questions about building code violations, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes.
And, and the, and the liabilities of those who ignore those laws.
Correct.
Would, did you serve this same complaint on the owners of six hundred Humboldt? Because they would certainly be the ones that ignored Mr. Paxton's order.
I did, it was not my job description to serve them with the complaint. I did present them the liability position that they were in by not participating or not getting it fixed in a timely fashion. I actually identified the penalties. I gave this portion of this to the, to the managers at that time that identified their potential liability for not responding to it. It was not my position to give them citations. It was staff's position to give them citations. And that's why I made the complaint against them not giving citations.
I have a question for Mr. Paxton, if I may.
Yeah, yes.
Given the extensive list of the dangerous and substandard issues found at the site, some of it being electrical, some of it being plumbing, some of it being sanitary. Was there a priority list of which items that they should have addressed first?
The fire life, safety items.
Would affect everybody at the complex?
Correct. We, we addressed handrails, guardrails that were missing off the second stories, addresses, fire extinguishers, the location of fire extinguishers. Those were the immediate hazards to the outside. EMTs couldn't find what apartments if there were no numbers. Those are all done. And they paid, through the fire department, they paid for violation fines for re-inspections. The Willows doesn't allow for the building department to issue citations. You have no bail schedule. There, you can't issue, building department can't issue a citation legally. We don't have a bail schedule. We don't have citation power. I'm authorized to give citations if you had them, but you don't have them in your municipal code. You don't have a way to, for, you don't give me any teeth to do anything but other to write corrections and give notices, and then to actually vacate the people out of the building. I didn't want to do that. There was nothing that severe. There weren't open electrical boxes or anything else. They were all mostly maintenance issues. And we, I gave the lady as much time as she could. We, I helped her fill out the, the forms. We expedited review of those engineering. As soon as she got them in, we turned them right around for her. And she's been working on them every since, as their budget can allow.
Thank you. Nothing further, Mr.?
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Buggin?
Well, I thi- I think the question that occurred to me after reading all of the material and understanding your statement that, that we were exposing the city, meaning we, the staff and us who are the city, to liability. But I, I kept reading this material and, and believing that you were unveiling liability risk to us, to others, which isn't the norm for me, is, is that we would not be out there and saying, you should sue the city because, you should sue the city because, you should sue the city because. That's the way it read to me. But it always comes back to me is like, what are we after here? Are we, I mean, is this a, just a public embarrassment or a berating of people? Is it a desire to get the city manager fired? What do we want? What do you want to happen? Enforcement of rules and regulations. I don't think these people, you know, intentionally don't do it. So I, and then you have three more of these that are coming down the pike of complaints from people that you've nurtured along to, to, to present, to demonstrate that we're doing things wrong? Where are we going with this?
You used the operative word "we." I made the complaint. If you don't want to follow up, you don't want to insist on them following it, then that's your choice. You, you've made it an issue now of the city council, but bringing it up, you brought it up in a public setting. That's fine. I didn't choose to do that. It's some, either staff or the mayor so chose to do that. I brought this to your attention because it is in fact, and I identified very clearly what the building code says, what was in fact a deficiency in and causing a, a slip and fall situation that made it, made it prob- if you look at our protocol, if I might.
Sure.
Okay. So one of the things specifically in the protocol calls for the city manager to quote unquote enforce all the laws in there, okay? And then too, if we look at what I cited, and I'm gonna, here, you need to understand, I did not go haphazardly at doing this. Number one, I looked at the code sections that I was already familiar with and expanded upon that. And then I also consulted because our, our protocol manual and our municipal code seems to be silent on how an individual, be it a councilman or any, any of the public, make a complaint about the city manager. The protocol manual and the municipal code makes it clear if somebody has a complaint against one of the staff that they take it to the city manager. But the best I can tell, the protocol manual and our municipal codes are in fact silent how somebody makes a complaint to this, about the city attorney, or excuse me, the city manager. So I also consulted the, what's referred to as understanding your city's departments. This is put out by the League of Cities. Since I went through the protocol manual and so on, I didn't find a problem. Here's what, I've got some excerpts here, so bear, bear with me. This is in the introduction. "It may not be necessary to have a detailed understanding of the functions of your city's departments, but basic understanding of these functions will help you make fully informed decisions." "The purpose of this guide is to provide information about each of the city's department's responsibilities, functions, and their relationship to the council members." So I started looking through this. It's one of those documents that you can actually word search on. And so I brought up liabilities and so on. Here's where it went to first. "The primary functions of the human resources department says, 'Risk management involves accidental, accident liability, insurance, and safety.' 'As provided by law, people wishing to recover money from the cities for injuries must file a claim to the city, against the city. 'Frequently such claims arise for minor property damage and trip and fall accidents. 'Liability staff generally works in conjunction with the city attorney.'" So I went to the city attorney's section. This is what it says under the city attorney's section for functions and guides. The guide says, "The city attorney is the chief counsel to all elected officials. An important aspect of the city attorney's job is to render opinions on specific legal issues." "The guide also says, 'Effective communication requires a joint effort on the part of city officials to make sure the city attorney is kept fully informed. Council members must sometimes take an initiative in communicating their concerns to the city attorney. It, it is particularly helpful for the city attorney to read, to receive a quote unquote heads up if a council member knows in advance of a legal question that might arise. By alerting the city attorney beforehand, the city attorney will be prepared to answer any questions that might arise. But you'll recall, recently, the city council changed your protocol manual to prohibit a council member of any communication directly with the city attorney. So I referred to the section then that refers to the city members' relationships with the city manager. This is what it says, "An elected official normally works with two kinds of matters, daily constituent needs or specific complaints. In order to deal effectively with either type of problem, the elected official requires staff assistance. Perhaps the most common problem experienced is a constituent service problem, such as when a citizen, citizen contacts a council member with a complaint about city services. The council member then asks the manager or designated staff to investigate and resolve the problem." "The league's also said that there are two important factors to consider in the council and manager relationship and the responsibilities that the city has, city council has towards the city manager, providing direction to city staff and evaluating the performance of the city manager. So if you're looking for my evaluation of the performance of the city manager, I would have to say that it's sorely lacking. So this is what I use for my process to be able to demonstrate that there was a problem out there. It could have been resolved. It needed to be assisted upon from my perspective, from the city staff, city manager, the people in charge of this, and, and so on. It was lacking. I never insisted that they go out and do anything. I made suggestions. I took the time to take pictures of the problem. I knew the problem because I'm familiar with the construction type and, and so on, so."
Well, thank you, Forrest. I appreciate that. It, it appears as I read it and listen and hear that the, there is nothing haphazard about any of these things, and I'm sure there will be nothing haphazard about the ones that are coming. What appears to be is an intent to get the city manager fired. And since you have that intent, it, everything you say and do is filtered through an agendized objective, which I think discredits your, I mean, impacts your credibility. So that's just my position, and I'll move back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr.?
David, David, I'm gonna ask you, and I've told you, asked you this before. Please do not redefine my intent by what you think it is and then beat me up on the intent that you think I had. My intent was to get the problem resolved, not to get the city manager fired.
Well, I didn't say it was your intent. I said it's my perception of your intent.
And then you went on to continue to beat me up on it. I'm just telling you, don't go with your perception. Go with what I told you, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Hudson.
Yeah, okay. So I read through this. I read through it again. You applied some applicable government code sections, which one of them I actually had to look up because you had, you didn't put the code section in there, which is fine. There's certain things that sometimes get missed when you're doing this. Because you, you kind of left some parts out of it, and so I just wanted to, I wanted to read the whole code, right? And I did. Although, first of all, I want to say to the new manager down there, you're doing a great job. As a first responder, it's a lot easier to get into those apartments. I don't feel like I'm gonna fall off the side of the stairs when I'm helping somebody down them. So I have to say you've been doing a great job there. The place is really turning around. I appreciate that. From what I've heard from the back and forth between Mr. Paxton and you, Forrest, is that it seems like the situation's been resolved. It, I understand you believe that there was an air done. However, from what I'm looking at, as far as the codes go, that you've stated, and what you're telling us of, you cited the violation, check. You tried to make contact with this constituent, check. You reevaluated the place, check. I'm, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing where the, where the, how you quoted it from Cornell, the non-pieces. I'm just not seeing that here. And that's just, I mean, that's my two cents. I'm, I'm not looking behind the scenes. I'm, I'm reading the papers that are in front of me. I'm listening to the conversation. It seems like there's a lot of work that had to be done there. And it seems like there's a priority checklist of things that need to get done first. And unfortunately, you can't. You can't do it all at once. I have one at my house, right? I got, gotta prioritize. What's, what's next to fix, right? And you kind of gotta go with what you can, what you can throw in there. We do the same thing with our sidewalk rehabilitation projects. We do that everywhere. In, in every aspect of life, we prioritize it fast. And I, like I said, I, I went and I, I talked to both of them about this. I haven't had a chance to talk to you. I haven't seen you since I started reading this. But like I said, I, from what I'm reading, it seems like the situation's been handled. It seems like attempts were made. You said forty plus attempts?
Forty, forty site visits, but okay, uh, one visit to be, the first visit, we visited all fifteen buildings. So I mean, they can be hours long.
Right, right. And then I just, my one question was, is on your background, you said March first, twenty twenty-three. But then you stated that you did your visit on three twenty-four. So that's a, that's a, almost a four week, yeah, three weeks.
Three twenty-four of twenty twenty-three is our first visit.
And then Forrest, you stated here on March first of twenty twenty-three.
That was the date on his, his citation.
Are you looking at?
His notice right here.
Is it twenty twenty-four?
It says twenty twenty-three on it.
That's not in the file. I don't have that in the file.
Pardon me?
I don't have that in my file. I'm not sure where you got that from. Maybe that's-
I actually got it from you, Ms.?
I'm not saying you didn't. I'm saying it's not in the file, but I reviewed it today.
And I, I think, can I just cut in because I think there's a little bit more background. This actually has been going on with Nate for much longer before Wyatt came on board. So there might be, and there is, that I believe there are, other violations, other notices, and other things that occurred before Mr. Paxton became involved.
Gotcha. Okay. I, I was just looking for a point of clarification on that.
That is probably what that issue, Wyatt doesn't know what happened before he was involved.
Correct. And I, I've read through the email chain between Forrest and city manager. And honestly, a lot of the codes and everything else you guys are talking about, it's water over my head, right? I'm, I'm not, I'm not in that realm. Don't ask me about insurance policy and probably ask that, answer that question, okay? Buildings are not my realm. But like I said, at this point, I, I understand you had grievances. I just don't, I don't see, I don't see where there was a, a non-pieces that you had stated in the beginning of your letter.
Just for the clarity for the city attorney, please. This is dated March first, twenty twenty-three, signed by Mr. Paxton. It specifically identifies section one oh oh one point eight, faulty weather protection. And then it goes on to identify deteriorating, deteriorated or ineffective waterproofing of roofs. So he was well aware of that problem. He didn't inherit this problem. He was aware of it.
I'm not gonna argue with you, Mr. Sprague. I don't have that in front of me, so, and I don't, I don't have the file, nor have I been instructed to go back and look at any of this. I'm just letting you know that there, I know that there was a time period where Nate was responsible for a lot of these things because, like Mr. Paxton explained, that's where the teeth of the Willow's municipal code lies in noticing or doing anything as far as building codes go. And so when we brought Wyatt Paxton on, there had been things that happened before he had been there on most of the properties that we're still dealing with. So I just wanted to make that the council aware of that issue. But I can't speak specifically to whatever notice you're looking at. They don't have it in front of me. And I'm happy to research this, but that's at the council's direction.
No, I think, yeah. No, like I said, I believe that, as you said, you're not there to make sure they're fixing the problem. I mean, they're to inspect the property, right? But you're not there to give suggestions on how to fix it or where the water's coming from. That's not your job.
And that's not what I'm complaining about.
I understand that. I understand that.
All right.
I mean, yes and, yes and no, because you're not, you're not complaining about him not telling them that, but at the same time, that's what you were kind of wanting him to do, from what I'm understanding of what you wrote. You were wanting him to take that next step and say, hey, this is where you need to fix.
No.
And you're, and the complaints, they weren't doing their job.
Nope.
Because they noticed that there was a water leak, right? They know, they know that there was a faulty, a faulty roof or a faulty, how did you put it? Excuse me. There's a lot of pages here. I don't remember which direction to go. He does state that there is a faulty weather protection, right? He noticed that in his inspection, okay? And then the list of which that was prioritized wasn't up to him, wasn't up to you as to whether it got done first or last. And as you stated, it can be substandard, but it's not a reason to have the person evicted out of that, that residence, right? Or we can't, you can't force anybody's hand to put that as priority number one. Am I, am I mistaken in saying that?
No, you're not. And, and you realize this is March twenty twenty-three. And then there's a summer event. They re-roofed the building. And then it doesn't start leaking again until the next winter. So there's no way to know whether it was completely waterproof during the summertime. They obtained the permits. They tried to do a repair, several times of which- They obtained the permits. They tried to do a repair, several times of which she told me that he wouldn't let him in to check to see if it was repaired or not. So they were working with a difficult tenant in the first place. I couldn't get in the building. So we had a summer to go all the way through, then maybe something failed, or maybe this was a completely new leak. We don't know. But we did everything we can by the code. And I'm not disagreeing with you that, that I didn't sign something before. You brought up this complaint as unit one oh nine. That's what I brought the information forward with. And there, if we went back on the history of this, Lynn County was doing your inspections. I, I, it could go all the way back. But I just tried to show that we had seven permits in ten years. And since I've been there, we've obtained twenty-one permits and they're making major progress. And isn't that what we want? That's all we want, safe building.
Like I said, it's
We don't want to displace people out of their housing in Willow. We try, we go the extra mile trying not to do that. And we try to assist the owners.
Yeah, and seeing the handrails and the guardrails on the ground that were getting painted, that's, I love seeing that.
Mr. Sprague knows that I've accepted his phone calls on weekends about problems. I've, I've, I, I accept phone calls. She's called me on weekends, on, on days off, trying to get these problems done. And I handle those as quickly as we can. That doesn't happen any other way. Okay?
Did I misunderstand that you, they replaced roofs last summer? Is that what you?
They repaired roofs.
They repaired?
Yes, that's mainly what the seven permits were the pre- previous ten years was roof repairs. But they did do roof patches. They obtained those. Many air conditioners and heating units were repaired. We found places without heat. And they, they fixed them as soon as they could. But they have, the tenant has to let them, let them in. It's their building and if the tenant says they don't want them in there, they have to get a warrant to get the repair guy. Try to, try to line that up. These, these owners have a difficult job with some tenants. And so we all have to try to work hand in hand.
Mayor, may I make a motion to take no action on this?
Uh, or do you want to?
Oh, yeah.
He hasn't spoken.
Yeah, good. I'm just letting my colleagues speak. Anything further?
No, that was, I just wanted to speak strictly to the moment. I didn't want to go into any other field. I just wanted to speak strictly to what I read and my understanding came back and the conversation that I heard and the usual that I've heard.
Very good, very good, very good, Evan. Thank you. Let me further?
Nothing further.
Okay, okay. Mr. Sprague, you seem surprised, uh, that we're addressing this complaint tonight. That, that's perplexing.
Okay.
You, you submitted a, a serious complaint alleging non-feasance on being, on the part of our city manager and our building affected.
Yes.
And you, you seem surprised that I brought this matter forward for discussion?
No, actually, I thought we would probably take it in the closed session to discuss.
That is one option.
Okay.
Also, open session is another option.
Okay, that, and that was your choice, not my choice. I'm surprised.
Absolutely, absolutely. That was my choice.
So if you're asking me if I'm surprised, yes, I'm surprised. I thought you would have taken it in the closed session.
This is serious, a serious allegation.
That's correct.
Okay, non-feasance.
Yes.
It's a serious business, and that's why we're having this discussion. So
And that's why I thought we would take it. Had I had the ability to discuss this pre, ahead of time with the city attorney, I might have handled it differently. But you four people decided that I could not talk to the city attorney.
Not necessarily, Mr. Sprague. Okay, let's, 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 let's deal with facts here and not innuendo, okay? So I have, uh, received your complaint, obviously, as well as, as well of my, as well of my colleagues have. And I, I find your, your alleged, and I use the term alleged complaint, extremely problematic and serverless.
Okay.
Having it, you know, from a professional standpoint, over many decades dealing with complaints of all types, this is the, the bizardest complaint I've ever seen. First of all, uh, this, you, you mentioned the city protocol manual, uh, earlier and, and you like to pick the, you know, snippets that fit your particular, you know, uh, position or, uh, the way you want to maneuver the, the story at the time. Uh, but
Say, rephrase that.
With that, no, okay, I'm, I'm, I'm commenting. It's my turn to comment.
That's fine. I didn't
This is not gonna be a question and answer period. I'm going to make comments.
I didn't understand your comment.
Okay. Again, I find, uh, uh, your overall complaint problematic. First of all, as city council members, there is no one city council member more superior to another city council member, okay? We work with the Democratic and their, and, and, uh, process as a republic. And ultimately come to majority, majority, uh, cities, correct? You created your own homemade letterhead. Why do you have your own homemade letterhead? That I, I, that makes absolutely no sense. I have never seen a, a council member or, or, uh, anybody in a, like, you're appointed, you weren't elected, but in an elected office position create their own, their own letterhead. It, I find that problematic. Why, why do you do that? Why is this on your own homemade letterhead?
It's, it's
We have city official letterhead here at City Willow. I find, I find that problematic. First of all, and then apparently you don't feel that your, your colleagues in the city council are intelligent enough to figure out what the term non-feasance means, because your very first sentence, you described non-feasance. But using a Cornell Law School, uh, definition. I find that offensive. I know what non-feasance means. I'm sure my colleagues know what non-feasance means. We're not idiots for crying out. I, I find that offensive. I have never seen that in any, any type of a complaint ever. You're, you're defining what non-feasance means, okay? Uh, may I, may I offer you a definition of malfeasance? Malfeasance generally defined is wrongdoing, especially by a public official. I see your actions tonight as malfeasance. You're alleging non-feasance on our dedicated staff members. I find your, your behavior, uh, malfeasance. This, this is wrong. This complaint is wrong. This is wrong. You chose, as Mr. Thomas said, you chose not, excuse me, excuse me, sir? Thank you. You, you, we will, we will take comments when, when, at the appropriate time. You will get your opportunity. Okay, thank you. Where was I? I was, I had just defined
You were telling me how offended I was to you.
Well, yeah, yeah, so, anyway. I just find your, your airco complaint completely baseless and, and without merit. And from my perspective, this is yet another of a years-long series of examples of you editorializing a given topic, selecting snippets of the same that fit your agenda at hand at a particular time, which seems to be attempting to discredit dedicate, dedicated and devoted individuals and manipulate the outcomes to fit your personal uh, vindictive needs. I, I, I can't find a better, a better term for it. At the time, whatever they may be. Uh, as, as our city attorney mentioned, our, our very dedicated city staff, beginning with our fire chief Nate Monk, has been all over this Cedar Hills complex issue for some time, long before you were ever appointed to the city council, Mr. Sprague. And, and I know you're fully, fully aware of it. As such, uh, a later point, our, our outstanding professional building official Wyatt Paxton, thank you for, for, uh, your service to City Wyatt and for your information tonight and for being here. Uh, uh, started working with, uh, with Chief Monk. And later, after Joe Bettencourt, uh, joined our team as community development service director, he also began working, uh, on the, on the myriad of complaint, uh, complaints and, uh, and code, code violations at Cedar Hills Complex. And we do know that, and it's been, uh, it's been mentioned that the, uh, the property managers have a very difficult position. Yes, I'm, I'm fully aware with that, fully aware of that complex and the, the, uh, resources that, uh, the city of Willow's expends in maintaining, uh, public safety at, at all levels to that, to that property, ever since that property was, was first built in nineteen eighty-two. Uh, with, with that said, you know, you've got a, you've got a big job in your hand. You've got a lot, you know, obviously a lot of tenants. And they're also problematic tenants as well, and, and we do know that, so. And, uh, thank you for, you know, taking, taking on the, you know, the, the myriad of code, code enforcement violations and working with the city team to resolve those issues. It's, it's definitely much appreciated. You should be thanked and respected for that. Uh, but as I said, Chief Monk and, and other, other team members have been working diligently on, on, on these, uh, these violations for some time. And city manager Marty Brown has kept this, this council advised from a high level, uh, viewpoint as she does on, on all, uh, operational fastest with the city when, when need be. On the, uh, the, uh, overall situation as it has developed with, with that, with that building. I'm, I appreciate, uh, the information, Marty, that, that you've shared with, with the council member, with, with the city council in reference at the status of, of the work that's been done, uh, by, by the team with, and with the, uh, uh, support of the management, of the new management team on, on that building and vast, vast improvements have been made. Uh, what I, what I've heard here is the code enforcement violations have been, have been properly addressed and, and handled and dealt with appropriately. And, and from a professional standpoint. So therefore, I, I don't understand, Mr. Sprague, that you, you submit a, a complaint alleging non-feasance when we have, we have been advised by a, a series of emails. And also tonight with the, uh, uh, you know, with our, uh, with our team members, Mr. Paxton's, uh, reports of, of his work on, on these numerous code, code enforcement violations and such, uh, to date. And you seemed, uh, fairly satisfied with, with, you know, with Mr., with Mr. Paxton's comments. And, and actions, however, you allege non-feasance on Mr. Paxton. That does not make any sense, Mr. Sprague. No sense to me at all. Alleging non-feasance when, when you, when now you're satisfied basically with, with the results and what it, what has taken, taken effect. You're, quite frankly, your explanation for your activities submitting this complaint are, it, it doesn't make any sense.
It makes perfect sense.
It does not make any sense what, what, what you, what you've told me tonight. No sense, no sense at all.
I told you earlier and I said it again, and I'll say it now, this is not intended to diminish what Mr. Paxton has been able to do and has done thus far. He identified these specific problems. He identified this roofing problem as a good example. And I cite, and I'm gonna read it to you here because you seem to want to gloss over
Please do not read me. Read to me, Mr. Sprague. Don't read to me. You can summarize. Don't read to me, please.
The applicable government codes, the following irrelevant phrases from the regulation of building
Are you reading to me?
Yes.
Summarize for me. Don't read to me.
I'm summarizing.
Summarize.
I'm summarizing. And it says, "Any building in which there exists any conditions that endanger the health, safety of the occupants shall be deemed a substandard building." Structural hazards shall include deteriorated and ineffective waterproofing of roofs. The building department of every city shall enforce within its jurisdiction all provisions published in the state building standards codes and other rules and regulations pertaining to the repair of apartment houses.
You just read to me. Was that from your report, Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Yes, I already read that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Please stop reading to me. I read that. Thank you. I read your, I told you, I read your complaint.
Mr. Mayor?
Word by word.
I'm gonna tell you this real clear. You're the mayor.
Yes, I am.
You get to handle the gavel. You get to, to sign the resolutions. You do not get to tell me what I can and cannot say during a public meeting. Thank you. It goes on to say
You are reading to me. I've already read your complaint, Mr. Sprague. Thank you.
Then you're gonna hear it again.
Gentlemen, can we get, gentlemen, can we get back on the, back on the subject of what we're gonna, what our action is here?
Yes, I'm almost
Is that okay? Let me just get back to that.
By ordinance, the city may designate and charge a department organized to carry out
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague? Mr. Sprague? I'm going to finish my comments. Thank you. I've already read your complaint. You're reading from your complaint. I asked you not to read to me. You're reading to me anyway. Thank you.
And I'm gonna ask you not to talk down to me and not to try and shut me up. So get done with your comments.
I am in no way, I am in no way talking down you. I do my best to treat everyone with respect, Mr. Sprague, whether you agree or not. Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Sprague. To wrap it up, I just, I just recommend that this council not waste any more time on this, on this, this baseless, meritless complaint uh, this evening, moving forward. Mr. Mr. Paxton, I want to, want to thank you for your professionalism. Ongoing professionalism and your outstanding work that you do here as our building official for the city of Willow. And lastly, Mr. Sprague, as Mr. Thomas indicated, uh, you, you refuse to participate in the city manager's performance evaluation. That, that's your prerogative. You refuse to participate. However, if you feel that the city manager is, uh, is non-feasance, is committing non-feasance or any other uh, improper actions in any way, I, I don't understand why you did not participate in, in that performance evaluation. And you could have brought that and any other concerns you had, uh, to that evaluation process. We had a very, we had a very, uh, you know, a very, uh, it was just a, a a very effective, a very effective and efficient, uh, means of, of evaluating the performance of our city manager. Due diligence was taken to do that and you had every opportunity to, to express your concerns in your performance evaluation. I don't understand why you did not, uh, partake of that and perform your duty as a council member and evaluate the city manager, but you chose not to. And again, that's your prerogative.
And when did we do the evaluation?
The performance evaluation?
Yes.
Counselor, what was the final day? What were the dates of our performance evaluation?
When it first hit the agenda? And it was finalized on April ninth, and there was four meetings in between.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mr. Thomas.
Okay, it was done in April.
It was finalized in April.
Right.
Finalized, finalized in April.
This issue did not come to light to the extent that it came until May fifteenth, well after the evaluation.
Thank you, Mr. Sprague.
Okay, so you asked me a question. Why did I didn't? Because the time you were doing the evaluation, this was not as hot an issue at the time. Had it been, I certainly would have.
Nonetheless, you still chose not to participate in the city manager's evaluation.
You're absolutely right. I so chose not to participate.
Very good. I have no further comments. I, I, I I implore my colleagues on the council that we should, uh, uh, cease, uh, cease further action on this topic at this time. I find this, uh, this complaint meritless, meritless and baseless. Thank you. Mr. Hudson.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion of no action.
I think we need
No, public comment, I apologize. That's why I'm the vice mayor.
We're taking, we're, we're taking, uh, we'll, we'll take, the council will take public comment at this time.
Can I answer your question, Mr. Jackson? No.
It is not. It's discussion. It's discussion.
No need, okay. Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Uh, we'll, we'll take public comment at this time. Uh, any members of the public who would like to make comments and any public comment references, I don't please, yes, sir, I see. Please approach a podium. It's not required, but it is appreciated if you do state your name for the record. Thank you.
Oh, I'd be very happy to keep my name, sir. My name is John O'Connell. I am a resident of the Cedar Hills apartment complex that we're, that we're dealing with here. I have been a tenant there for almost five years. And I, I have a very strong feeling that I'm really wasting my time and wasting my breath standing here talking to you people now. Uh, you know, at some point in time, you've got to have somebody, you've got to have a victim in these things. Well, I'm the victim. And there's a bunch of other people in this apartment complex that are also being victims. But, but you're never gonna hear from them. All you're interested in doing is, is whirling among yourselves here. Are you interested in hearing what I have to say or not? I can just go home and go to bed and just let this thing
I asked you to make public comments. I'm obviously interested in your, in your public comments.
Well, here's the thing.
So go ahead.
When I, when I moved into the, into this apartment complex almost five years ago, it was almost empty and it was in fairly decent shape. In fairly, it wasn't perfect, but it was in fairly decent shape. Over the intervening years, it changed, uh, I, I don't know, this is all rumor. If I was told that, that, that the ownership of the complex changed several times. I know for a fact that the, that the property management that was taking care of the complex did change on several occasions. And things went steadily downhill, and I mean rapidly downhill. The place just got worse and worse fast. And they kept changing onsite managers and changing onsite managers. And the, the tenants were just being, were, were just, as I say, the place was practically empty. Well, were just, as I say, the place was practically empty. Well, as, as our, as our politically induced California housing shortage developed, the place started to fill up. And of course, by this time it's in pretty bad shape. So things really started to go to hell in a hurry. And we all, the, one, one of the major, major problems is that this place has always had a leaky roof. Every building in that complex has roof leaks, every one. And they're, and they have been leaking for the entire five years that I have lived there. Fortunately for I, for myself and all the rest of the tenants, we got lucky. There was a drought. Three of the five years I lived there, we, we were in drought. So it wasn't a huge deal. Everybody was able to keep up with the leaks well, but the drought broke and we really had a problem. We were all being flooded. So of course, we all started screaming for relief. And after watching, after, after beating my head on the wall, talking to the onsite manager time after time, and she would look me in the eye and say, "We're not going to fix these leaks because it will cost money and we will not spend the money." I was told that numerous times and the other tenants here were told the very same thing numerous times. So time went by. I looked at, I looked at all these, at all these other tenants beating their head against the wall, arguing with the onsite manager and, and decided that was a fool's game and decided to take a little different tack. So I, I went to the city of Willis Building Department and I told them my problem. And it all, that was a terrible experience. Dealing with those people was a terrible experience. I was treated rudely. I was disrespected. I was lied to. I was stood up. I was treated terribly. It was an awful experience and they refused to do anything to help me or the other tenants with the problem. Nothing, absolutely nothing. Time went by, time went by. Nothing got done. I decided I needed to escalate this thing in some, in some fashion. So I decided that I would, I would try to go to the city manager and see if that would work. And what I got from the city manager was pretty much the same thing I got from the building department. Disrespect. I got ignored. I was disrespected. I was stood up. I was lied to. I was, I was just, I submitted report after report. I did, I jumped through all their hoops. I wrote letters. I submitted reports. I took photos. I did all this, all this stuff. And, and, and I was just mistreated and, 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 and treated like dirt during this whole process. These people would call me time after time after time and tell me they were going to be at my apartment at such and such a time, on such and such a day to inspect it and they would stand me up. They did this time after time after time. I don't mean a couple of times. I mean time after time after time. This just got to be, this got to be the rule rather than the exception. So I was obviously getting nowhere with the city manager. So I decided I should escalate to the city council. Well, as luck would have it, the city counselor that I happened to connect with was Mr. Sprague. And his tactic of the problem was he went and met with the property management company. And based on his building experience, he told them not only where the roof was leaking, but how to repair it. And at the same time, he presented a business case to them which convinced them that it was in their best financial interest to solve the problem. And guess what? The sun came out and the problem got solved. Nobody on city staff did anything to solve the problem of the roof leak. Mr. Sprague fixed it. Period. And while we're on the subject of all these fabulous repairs that are being made, every upstairs apartment in this complex has a balcony. I happen to be on the ground for, so I'm living under one of these balconies. Now, these, a lot of these things have rotted over the years and they're a hazard. They need to be rebuilt. The one over me was rebuilt. This one, this, this, this was, this was inspected. It had permits. It had inspections. It had all this stuff. Well, now when it rains, water runs out the bottom of this balcony. That means that the structural, the structural elements of this balcony are being exposed to water. The balcony is going to rot. It is rotting as we speak. It is also pitched back toward the building so that rainwater runs back to the wall, through the wall and drips in, and drips through the, the living room ceiling into my living room. Now, this is, this is all with, this is all with the building, your, your wonderful building department watching. They're supposed to be supervising and inspecting all of these repairs. Well, that's what I got. So that's where we are.
Thank, thank you, Mr. O'Connell, for the comments. Are there any other public comments in reference to this matter tonight? Anything? Yes, ma'am? Yes, please. It's not required, but if you could state your name for the record, it's appreciated. Thank you.
That is the one of the person they helped us. I am the person who take care, take care of that right now, with my new manager. Okay, when we started to get citations, they gave me for the fire department that when we started, start working with the people to fix all the problem. Of course, in that moment, we have a lot of bad tenants with a really bad attitude. They don't let us, for any reason, that be the relation between the, the manager or whatever happened, does not giving access to the apartments, even that's because they're staying with the inspector. We are people that they don't let us in. Even we go with the call in storming and, and serve the twenty-four, twenty-four hours nory. Whatever say they, whatever repair they given to me. So we take care of that one with permits and everything. About the balcony, the incident that happened, the person they leaving upstairs for the, for apartment one oh nine, he was in eviction. So when they get out, they flooded the apartment upstairs. Okay, so that's not a way that I can avoid that kind of stuff because it vandalized my apartments. So the problem with the roof, that's one of the problem they have it that we can even have access to fix it because we had to get in access to the apartment upstairs, this apartment two oh nine. That is the problem isn't the, in, that is in the, in the closet for one of the bedrooms. But that's not the leak they coming from. The leak they coming from for my broken coil, for my central AC unit. Because that's in the unit that we have in the apartment is old. That's the hydronic, that's the system that they don't use no more. That's hard to get in the parts. Even I know for Mr. The getting changed it for the problem, getting changed it to another renovated apartment because we were not taking time to take him out the people from the eviction and we were not taking time to get a, a brand new unit for the apartment and he refused. He kick him up to me for his apartment, he kick him out the inspector and the other, the other inspector out that they don't let us in. I said, "Okay, you don't, if you complain for something, if you don't let it in to make the repairs, how are we going to fix it? There's no way. I can force it and I can do nothing to, to you." But yes, I understand that I have a lot of things that I had to fix it and they had to upgrade. We're working on it and everything that we did, what we're doing that we do with inspection and plans with the engineers and that deal with you by the city, it be approval before we, we start the repairs and that be inspected. So that's the only thing that I do is that we do the best that I can. But that's, we had to do them by steps. That's not like, no way that we can do everything in one time. And you know, depending on the, in what situation we're working, we're working to the worst, to the, to the lower. That's what we do. Okay?
Yeah, thank you for your comments, ma'am. Thank you for your explanation. Thank you very much. Are there any other public comments in reference to this matter this evening? No other public comments? Okay, thank you. Anything further from staff? Mr. Paxton, anything further?
No, thank you. Thank you for, let me give an explanation.
No, you're, you're very welcome, Wyatt. Council members, council discussion? Oh, you, anyway, this is, this is not, this is not an action item. This is for council discussion in reference to, where do we go from here with this matter?
You know, we've heard from the property manager. We've heard from essentially all parties involved. And I have to go with what I can honestly say as a story that fit everything the most, which honestly leads me to believe that Wyatt did as he was hired to do the best of his ability. I do not believe that there was an act of non-feasance. I do believe that there was a legitimate water leak that needed to probably be handled sooner than later. And I'm, I don't mean, I'm not discrediting anything that you're saying, Mr. O'Connell. I'm not at all. I believe you when you say there was a water leak, that there was damage being done. And I believe the property manager that they were trying to solve the problem as well. However, with, with that being said, I can't, I don't see how as a, as a government entity, we can force a specific repair at a specific time without essentially being almost like martial law. And so I do not feel like that is a, a non-feasance. I believe that the violation was pointed out and was brought to the attention to the appropriate folks. And I'm, I am glad that Forrest was able to help you get the problem solved. But as far as it goes for the, the non-feasance complaint, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying that fact. And that's my reasons. I, I don't see any further need for a discussion or action to be taken. On that note, you mentioned something about you're not able to find people, but the fire chief is. I wanted some more clarification on that. I didn't.
We're reviewing the municipal code to add the building department into that. We've drafted up some suggestions to do that. So we're in the process of fixing that problem for you.
Any further, Mr.?
No, that was it. And like I said, I, I do know that there is a lot of vandalism that happens in that building. I've been in a lot of those apartments at different times. I've seen them at their worst where their spray painted and there's holes in every corner of the walls and then the roof and everything else. I've been in them where they've been fixed up and they look really nice inside. And I've been on the staircases when they shake and rattle when you're going up and down them and you can't trust the handrail. And like I said, now, now you can trust those handrails. You can hold on to them and things like that. So I, I, like I said, I believe that the, the problems are, there's an active solution trying to be put in place to fix all the issues that are going on there. And hopefully, you know, that solves all the problems. And hopefully, Mr. O'Connell's problem solved and there's, you know, hopefully less and less people with problems like, like his going on in that facility. Keep doing the best we can.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Mr. Thomas?
I only have one, one question, I guess. You, you defined Forrest's non-feasance as the mission to perform a required duty with failure to act when duty existed. And so I looked it up to make sure I understood it. Number two of the definition of non-feasance can be defined as not doing something which you ought to do, which you quoted. Number one says it is an intentional failure to perform a duty or obligation that one is required to perform. Are you suggesting that they're, they're, they intentionally did not do this?
I mean, suggesting that they intentionally did not take the action that they were supposed to take.
So you're saying, yes, they intentionally failed to perform. They intentionally did.
They did not intentionally perform.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anything further, Mr. Thomas? Thank you, Rick. Mr. Button?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Forrest, you underlined in red and highlighted in yellow that any person who violates any provision of this process is subject to civil penalties up to three hundred dollars or more than one thousand dollars for each violation and for each day. And a civ, civil penalty may be doubled to a limit of up to ten thousand dollars and that there is a possibility for imprisonment. Who are we targeting to pay these fines or go to prison?
What I was identifying, what the property owner has penalties pending. And that's what I presented to these ladies here is this is what the law says about your property owner has these potential.
They're, they're potentially on the hook.
Penalties are for them, not for the, the, not for staff.
Thank you for clarifying that because I did not understand that.
I wanted to clarify.
I thought I made it clear at the end there that, no, nevermind. Go ahead. That's fine. But that's, that was specifically what I gave to them in trying to help them be able to convince their manager or their owners that they needed to do something. For clarification here, the lady that I was working with before, the onsite property manager is the same one that Mr. O'Connell was referring to. She says, "We're not spending money. No, we can't spend money." And refused to do anything. Kudos to the, the regional manager who had the wisdom to hire a new onsite manager who I met with, within two or three days of her being hired and I explained to her what I perceived to be the problem. She then advised her maintenance man to find somebody to come out and do it. And they came out, it was on a Wednesday and a Thursday. And the rain that came on what, Friday or Saturday, John, did not present a problem. Okay? And that, that was my frustration is that we as a city, as staff, were not insisting on that this was in fact a slip and fall liability problem. And the code sections that I identified here specifically said that we as a city must designate and charge an enforcement of building standards. And in the event that somebody got hurt, the public entity is under mandatory duty to protect and the risk of injury of a public, and if not, the public entity is liable for the injury caused by the failure to discharge the duty. There's where the non-feasance comes into my, from my perception, the non-feasance of not discharging their duty. To insist that somebody, not to recommend what the remedy was, but in fact to insist that you've got a roof leak that's causing a slip and fall problem, get it fixed. That was, that was my frustration with this whole.
Thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Button?
No, thank you.
I had, I had one quick thing to that.
Oh, Mr. Hudson, yes.
And I don't, I'm, I'm not trying to beat the horse here or anything like that. I would have to say that my concern that I see is as a city council member, you are providing fixes to structural buildings as a city council member. You're contacted as a city council member. It's not within our duties or our rights to say this is exactly how you fix that. I believe that that is the duty of a licensed contractor to go out and actually make that designation. I, my concern with that is, is if you go out and you, you do do that, right? I'm not saying that you don't have the knowledge to, to make those statements. But as doing it as part of a city council member, that I feel like puts the city at more risk. You're suggesting this is where the leak's coming from. They spend the money to do the repair. It doesn't fix it. And then they come back at the city for that information. And I don't, that would be my only concern that I, that I see really. And so that's, that's just my, my one item that I wanted to bring up and at least make a statement on. So.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Anything further, other?
No, I, I think we're, I think we're good on this subject.
Thank you.
Mr. Hudson, I might suggest that I probably protected this city by in fact suggesting a particular remedy to the particular problem that in the event that Mr. O'Connell had slipped and fall or somebody else, and we still have the condition that exists out there, they, they would have then had grounds for a lawsuit against the city for non-performance.
Which I understand. And like I said, I see the paperwork here that, that would justify our, and back us in a court case on that. I don't see the paperwork that says a council member can act as a contractor while in the performance of a city council member. So that's, like I said, that's not, no, I, I don't. As a city council member, I don't go out and give people insurance information. You know, I can't give one of my customers' claims information. My claim, that's not within my scope of practice. That opens me up to liability. So I just want to make sure that we're keeping within our scope of practice as a council member.
Right.
Which is bringing something forward as you did. Whether it's agreed with or not agreed with, you, you did your job. You brought something forward that you wanted discussed and that's what we did. And my only, like I said, I, I'm not here to beat a dead horse. I was just making my one statement that, that I feel like that's outside of our scope of practice as city council members. And that's, that's all I have to say on that. So.
That's fine. Let me clarify. I was very careful to describe my experience as here's what it could be. It was not that I was necessarily prescribing or saying, "This is what you need to do." My experience has been, et cetera, et cetera. And actually, I talked with the regional manager today about that and she, she has had this experience in other buildings and she immediately picked up on exactly what the problem was and the remedy for it as well.
Perfect.
So I was very careful not to cross that line and say, here's what I need to do. Very careful. Say, here's been my experience. You might consider.
Thank you. Anything further, Riley?
No, sir.
Yeah. I'm satisfied that, uh, our staff utilized due diligence, followed the law and also embarked on a common sense approach as well in resolving the code. Working, continuing to work to resolve, resolving many of them and continuing to work on resolving different code, code-related violations at the Cedar Hills Com- Complex. And, uh, I find the allegation of non-feasance is not sustainable. And those are, that concludes my comments on that. And I feel that no further action is required by this council at this time. I'd like to thank staff, uh, for, uh, all of your hard work, uh, uh, on this and every other matter that you embark on every day. And, uh, I find that, you know, this alleged allegation of non-feasance, uh, simply, uh, does not exist, did not occur and does not exist. Thank you. That's, uh, all I had. Moving forward, do we have, uh, consensus from the majority council that that concludes the discussion on this item?
Yes.
Yes.
That concludes discussion on this item. Thank you very much. Uh, we have, uh, continued item, uh, six D to a future meeting, most likely the next meeting. Moving on, item seven, comments and reports. Item seven A, council correspondents. I have not been in receipt of any council correspondence. Uh, City Manager Marty Brown?
No, we haven't either.
Nothing has come in today since, uh, that I wasn't wearing. Very good. Thank you. Item seven B, uh, city council comments and reports. Uh, Mr. Sprague, would you like to begin?
Uh, no comments or reports.
Thank you, Mr. Sprague. And, uh, Mr. Thomas?
No comments or reports.
Mr. Button?
Ditto.
This is, Mr. Hudson?
I just want to thank all the people that showed up today to speak their piece on, uh, their retail dispensary cannabis business and as well as on the council member complaint. Um, I appreciate people showing up for the meetings. That's where we get our information. It's kind of nice to actually see a full house for once rather than one or two people in here. So, um, yeah, thank you for you guys, uh, appearing and showing up and giving your, giving your two cents. That's all I got.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Their opinions are much more valuable than two cents.
Well, mine's worth a half a cent, so it's really a big step up, so.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, I, I agree. Yeah, thank you for, it, it was good to see, uh, uh, a number of, uh, citizens here in the audience tonight. And thank you for sticking it out through the whole meeting, by the way. So, uh, thank you very much. Real quickly, uh, updates in reference to, uh, two of my major committee assignments. So I'll begin with the groundwater authority. As you know, we're moving toward establishing a, a groundwater sustainability fee, following the proposition to a team process. And we had, uh, I've, I've done my, my best to keep the council fully advised. I do have some good news. First of all, I want to, want to correct something, uh, I believe I misspoke at the last meeting. Our last, uh, meeting, we, we had agenda, uh, information discussion on our sustainability fee moving forward. There will be an action item coming, uh, before the council, most likely at our very next meeting. Marty, it's coming. It'll be another resolution. We had a resolution five years ago, uh, uh, that, that came before the city council. The city of Orland has already approved their resolution. It'll be very similar to the past, the resolution, just stating what the fees are moving forward. I do have some good news along those lines. The, the final numbers, uh, we, we, we have a draft fee report that, that we, uh, reviewed at our Friday meeting. We had a Friday, uh, Friday morning meeting this past Friday. Uh, fiscal, the, at, at the high end of our, uh, fee, uh, over, over the next five years will be right at three dollars and eighty-seven cents per acre. The first year, year one fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, if approved, will be at three dollars and sixty-eight cents, uh, break, which is a little bit cheaper than what I indicated the worst case scenario was. Following next year, it's looking at three eighty-seven, which is the top. Then the following year, back down below, where we will be the first year at three dollars and sixty-five cents, year four, three dollars and seventy-six cents and year five, three dollars and eighty-six cents an acre. Those are the projections, uh, but year one is looking at three dollars and sixty-eight cents an acre. Like I said, there'll be a resolution for, for coming for, for council, uh, discussion and, uh, action on that moving forward. That was the bulk of our, of our, uh, groundwater authority meeting. We, we do have the draft fee, fee study, uh, report, fee report. And, uh, uh, that'll be finalized here shortly. There are public outreach meetings that, uh, will be kept advised, uh, as well moving forward in that process. And today, this morning, we had a, a renotice, a regular regional transit committee and, uh, Glen County Transportation Commission meeting, uh, Lactic Forum, uh, last, or was it last week or the week before? I don't remember. I'm sorry, I had a, I thank you for, for pinch hitting for me. Apparently there was no forum.
No forum. It wasn't your fault, but it was mine.
So, so, and, uh, uh,
apparently it was agenda again today. I called with.
Yeah, it was agenda and we barely had a forum, but we had a forum, so we, we made it work. So, uh, thank you for pinch hitting for me. I, I had a, I had a, 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 a conflict.
Part of the.
So, so anyway, uh, today, uh, real light, regional transit committee agenda. Uh, we, uh, it was a very important item, but we renewed the, uh, a contract renewal with Bu- Bu- Glen Community College District for busing, uh, uh, Bu- Bu- college students, uh, to Orland and, and to Chico, which they've been a viable partner, great partner, and that continues with, with a brand new contract. Glen County Transportation Commission meeting, we approved the fiscal overall work program. And I just, uh, information for staff, Marty Thomas, our executive director, pointed out that, uh, any, any projects at all in the over, overall work program and Joe and Marty, you're, you're fully aware of this, but I just want to reiterate. If you have any, any long-term, like our CIP couple improvement, uh, uh, program or plan, projects moving forward, feel free to reach out to Marty and have those included in the, in the overall work program, uh, for maybe some additional funding. We're going to have a future, uh, uh, in the very near future, uh, uh, commission discussion on a, on a possibly two million dollars of dedicated fuel tax monies that we're not, that we're able to carry over and we're not mandated on a timeline to spend for, uh, supporting, uh, uh, particularly grant-funded projects that fall a little bit short for the, the three jurisdictions of Glen County, City Willow, City Orland. So, uh, if you, those projects, please bring them forward to Marty. And we may have, uh, we, we will, uh, at times have some, uh, some, uh, funding that can be utilized to, to effectively make those, uh, whole, whole project. So just wanted to point that out. And, uh, routine business, uh, we approved low carbon transit operations program, uh, allocation request. And this is all for our, the demand response, the short, the short trip, a bus, uh, service, uh, through Glen Ride in the purchase of a, an electric vehicle for, for low mileage runs. Okay, so anyway, it's going to take about, the seventy-eight thousand dollars is going to take us two years to get the funding to do it. We're going to try that with one vehicle for the short runs at first, see how that goes. You know, my thoughts on diesel power, it's hard to beat, okay, but in a rural area, but there we are. And we approved our unmet, uh, met transit needs definition hearing schedule, which will be coming to a council meeting, uh, uh, in the very near future. Other than that, uh, routine work, I'm still on Caltrans tale about repairing the Tahima Wood Street intersection. Uh, as you know, southbound traffic onto Tahima, right in the middle of, of, of Wood Street, which is stay route one sixty-two. I don't know, that, that crater now is probably about, what, six inches deep, isn't it? You know, Joe? And getting worse, and it was slated for not to be repaired until the total Sierra one sixty-two Wood Street reconstruction project, which there's no way in God's green earth that's going to hold up. So, uh, still, still beating the drums to get Caltrans off the stick and fix that. But we do have a viable partner in, uh, Mr. Dawson Stroud, who is our, who is our, uh, planner, uh, representative with Caltrans, who, who is carrying the message back to Caltrans and we're not shooting the messenger, but, you know, going from there and he knows that. So I just wanted to point that out. Uh, and that wraps it up for, uh, my comments on the transportation mission meetings and, and my report out. So with that, item seven C, city manager's report. Marty, I did not forget this.
I have no report.
No report. Very good. Okay. Moving on to, uh, anything else, gentlemen?
Nope.
No. Oh, sorry. Oh, no worries, no worries. Moving on to, I didn't want to, want to, if you had something else to bring up.
No, I was, I was apologizing for, I missed the transit committee today, meeting today.
Thanks, Evan.
I'm going to have a chance to reach out to you.
Yeah, thanks, Evan.
Actually, I called the public. That's, that's a little about ten minutes.
Yeah, Evan was in touch with Ashley at eight thirty by email and everything was good and then things went south. So, yeah. So you tried, Evan. Very good.
I did, I did, but then I got way late, so.
We waited a couple of minutes for you and then.
No, I, it was, it was a long thing.
Okay, no worries. We made it. We got through it. Uh, item eight, closed session pursuant to government code sections five four nine five four point three. The public will have an opportunity to directly address the legislative body in the item below. Part of the council convening in the closed session and public comments are generally restricted to three minutes. Item eight A, conference with labor negotiators for government code section five four nine five seven point six. The agency designated representatives are Marty Brown, City Manager, and Carolyn Walker, City Attorney. The employee organizations are WEA, UPEC and management. Are there any public comments in reference to the closed session item at this time? So, this is a podium. No public comments. Very good. Thank you. Thank you for attending, ladies and gentlemen, tonight. The time is, uh, nine fifty-six, twenty-one fifty-six hours on, uh, Tuesday, uh, May twenty-eighth. And we will be, uh, moving on to a closed session at this time. Have a good rest of the week. Thank you. Great. Well, good evening, everyone. It's still, uh, Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, uh, twenty twenty-four. The time is ten thirty on the dot, uh, twenty-two, thirty hours and, uh, reconvening into open session from our closed session discussion. Direction given to staff, uh, no further reportable action. Time is still ten thirty, uh, meeting adjourned. Thank you. Good night.